Okay, it looks like we have all council members here who will be attending, so we'll get started. Welcome to the Urbana City Council meeting. I'm Mayor Diane Marlin. It's Monday, October 26th, 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Here.
Ms. Laut? Ms. Hershey?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Colebrook?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mayor Marlin? Here. Before we get started, I want to give a special thank you to Austin Pontius. This is his last evening working with, as a UP-TV camera operator. He's one of the people who brings these meetings to you every week behind the scenes. And these Zoom meetings or meetings in general wouldn't happen without the work of UP-TV. So best of luck to Austin in his, his next role. And our loss is best by's gain. So thank you, Austin, for all you've done over the years. Okay, we'll go to approval of minutes of the previous meeting. It's October 19th, 2020, and that was a special meeting. Is there a motion?
I move approval of those minutes.
I'll second it.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Bill Colebrook. Are there any corrections? Bill Brown?
Not on this one, but I noticed that we didn't, I don't think we've approved the minutes from October 12th yet. Are those just not ready?
Billister Kay?
They are not ready yet.
Okay, thanks.
Will the clerk please call the roll? Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? I don't believe we have any. We haven't scheduled any presentations for tonight. We're moving on to public input. As you know, the public input instructions are included in the agenda for each and every meeting, and those are the full set of instructions, but I do want to read a summary of them tonight. The city takes public comment via email, written format, and verbally. As you know, on October 12th, 2020, the Urbana City Council approved new rules for public input during remote electronic meetings. These rules are listed on each agenda for city-sponsored public meetings. Members of the public may join meetings as either a Zoom webinar or telephone participant to make verbal input. This is a time for committee or council members to listen to the public. Discussion, debate, and commentary will not take place during this public input period. Public comments are limited to four minutes per person. Public input will total no more than one hour unless shortened or extended by majority vote of the members present. The meeting chair has the option of giving priority to speakers who wish to comment on specific agenda items upon which a vote will be taken. A person may speak once during the meeting and may not cede time to another person. We ask that you address your comments to the public body as a whole and maintain respect for the process and respect for members of the council, city staff, and general public. The meeting chair or member of the public body has the authority to call a speaker out of order for using abusive, harassing, threatening, or defamatory remarks. If the speaker refuses to cease the remarks, the meeting chair may mute the speaker's microphone and will ask the speaker to send the remainder of their remarks via email for inclusion in the meeting record. Thank you for helping us conduct respectful and productive meetings. And again, the full text of the public input instructions are included in the agenda. Okay. Looking at attendees, please raise your hand if you wish to address the city council. Okay. We'll start with Benjamin Stone.
Hello, this is Benjamin Stone. I am in Urbana, Illinois. I use they/them pronouns. I wanted to say, first of all, it's looking great on that resolution regarding stopping shutdowns and asking the governor to stop those. That's fantastic. Thank you very much for that. Do forgive me if I violate any of the list of new rules. It's going to take me some time to get used to, as I'm sure it will. You, just make sure that if I happen to be addressing the council as a whole and accidentally refer to you by name, please don't mute me for addressing my comments to a specific council member. Feel free to email me anything you want to, because I will not be able to bring up your emails or comment on them during the meeting. So Dennis Roberts, I apologize, oh, sorry, the council. I would like to apologize to the council. That was a legitimate mistake. I would like to apologize to the council for my inability to reply to Dennis Roberts' email that he sent to a group that I belong to, because I'm not allowed to now. In any event, I'd like to go ahead and jump back to a previous thing that I've mentioned a few times, but really quickly, out of curiosity, since you don't have a space in your agenda for response to public input, is public input effectively moot at this point? Since y'all can just sort of space out and since there's no, it literally says there will be no dialogue now, and if we're following the rules, there's no space in the agenda for any council member to bring up anything mentioned by the public to say, hey, citizen so-and-so, are you still present? I have questions for you about that. So just to let you know, right now, there is literally no way for us to get a response from a council member and address it to your body as a whole if it's, if it's addressed to us. So just so you know, we're already having ways to communicate with you fall through the gaps. You have removed your ability to respond to the things we're saying here. There's no time in your agenda for it. So we want to say thanks on those new rules. Really love the law definitions that basically say we can't say anything vaguely insulting, sarcastic. I like the one that implies that bringing up an issue over and over might be harassing, which brings you to the issue I'm going to bring up again. None of you have contacted me on it yet. Thank you, by the way, all of you for keeping your video screens on legitimately. I super appreciate that you have your cameras on. It's very nice to see your faces and to see the people participating. Going to bring up again, the incident which was shown by the chief of police during the presentation regarding the Aliyah Lewis incident, regarding the young teenage black male who was put forth without his permission on video as an excellent example of how to respond to the police. I presented to all of you at a council meeting and have repeatedly said you can have that information if you want. All the details that show that the police swayed that young black man out on the ground. Because he was black, they lie in their own thing, saying that he matches the description of the people of the incident occurring. None of you have yet responded to that, brought it up at all. I'm curious if anyone's ever going to mention it. Does that kid know he was put on, like, as a presentation? Does this juvenile, is this juvenile aware that their detainment was put for the whole public to see and is on the internet right now? Have you considered apologizing now that you know, now that the citizens have done research? Now that you know it was a mistake, a flat-out, we're arresting you because you're, we're checking you because you're black. Anyway, during the last 25 seconds, let me just get in here real quick. I can't wait to hear the people give their specifics about the parking budget adjustments. Oof, boy, those are terrible. And also specifically, that police increase? That little shifting of money that's going on there? Ooh, don't think we don't notice, friends. Brace yourselves, because people are coming in to talk. Enjoy the rest of your night. Thanks for listening, friends. Stay safe.
Thank you. Next up is Alan Max Axelrod.
All right, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All righty, so I just want to provide some additional context for the resolution that is being voted on today. Thank you for voting it out of committee unanimously with a recommendation for approval. It is Resolution 2020-10-052R, a resolution declaring continued utility disconnections in Illinois to be a pandemic safety risk. And I want to emphasize that right around the time that utility shut-offs resumed, Illinois was doing pretty well. We were in Phase 4. There were only 24 counties at a warning status for coronavirus. And the next week, it was down to 17. And that was 1/6 of the counties in our state. Then it went up to 34 counties, 1/3 of the counties in our state. This past Friday, it was 51 counties, 1/2 of the counties in our state. We haven't had a day under 2,000 cases of new coronavirus patients since October 6th. We haven't had a day with less than 3,000 new coronavirus cases each day since October 14th. We haven't had a day below 4,000 new daily coronavirus cases since October 23rd. And while the governor in our state is working very hard on almost every other front for protecting our residents from the coronavirus, Wisconsin, on October 24th, enacted a mandatory utility shut-offs moratorium for all electric and gas utilities, including corporate, municipal, and cooperative. So we are bracketed by Wisconsin with utility shut-offs protections, with Kentucky with utility shut-offs protections, and with activists in Illinois, or sorry, in Iowa, calling for utility shut-offs protections. The Sierra Club has amassed a coalition of a wide range of groups for that fight as well. And it is just utterly baffling that we need to fight for basic pandemic protections, city by city, in this state. So just as a reminder of who I am and who I represent, I am Alan Max Axelrod. I am the campaign lead of No Ameren Shut-Offs. It is a $0, all volunteer grassroots campaign. We now have 46 organizations in membership, now all the way stretching up to Lake County, Waukegan in Illinois, down to Carbondale. And we're not doing this because it's fun. We're not doing this because we think it's a cheap shot that we can land. We want to survive this pandemic, and we want to make sure our communities stay safe. So I hope that everybody who voted in the committee of the whole last week to unanimously recommend that this resolution be approved, I hope that you continue to vote in favor of it and pass this resolution tonight. Thank you so much, and stay safe.
Thank you. Next up is Christopher Hansen.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, Diane. I'd like to criticize specific Urbana City employees by name, and it doesn't look like the new public input guidelines allow me to do that. Am I allowed to do that?
No, we ask that you not do that. You may refer to it as city staff. That's an option. Christopher Hansen, did you want to continue speaking? Okay, we'll move on to the next speaker. Next up, Julie Watkins.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Julie Watkins. I live in Urbana. In last week's public input, a few spoke, a few speakers spoke about homeless people in Urbana. I hope you can talk about the city's plans. This is a predictable crisis. Places that people go to to get in out of the weather, they're closed now or time-limited due to COVID. But it's the same number of cold hours in a day and maybe wet hours. We have homeless in Urbana and many who are housing insecure, and where will the vulnerable people go? Back in World War II, in the years and months before Germans started killing Jews and others, there were many warnings, and they were unheeded. Our asylum laws were passed to avoid that happening again, but we're embarrassing ourselves at the border. But here, now with this pandemic, we have a chance to show that we at least care about our own vulnerable people. So I'm wondering what is the plan? Do the COVID services go first to those who have insurance and can drive up to testing sites? Are those already poor left with herd immunity by default? That's dangerous for all of us. And I'm hoping there are things that you're working on that rather than keeping the highest funding going to police even when winter is coming. People in the USA are trained since childhood to ignore all the indigenous killed, the enslaved killed, the poor people in other countries killed by USA bombs, and the poor people here we let die through neglect. Will I be reading about deaths in January? I don't want to be heartbroken again. I'm afraid I'm going to be listening to public input about local preventable deaths, whether it's COVID, whether it's flu, whether it's exposure. Warm and safe shelter would be prevention and a commitment to help. If there are preventable deaths because the dead didn't have services, people will be here to tell you about it. Will you have evidence that the city tried? I hope there won't be victim blaming, like you victim blamed Aliyah Lewis. I'd rather hear thank you stories here in public input about how the city helped people help other people. So I want to thank you for your consideration of this matter. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up is Grace Wilken.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
I wanted to speak tonight about item G on the agenda, about budgeting and the budget revisions. And I would just like to encourage you to keep in mind how our budget reflects our values and priorities in Urbana. And it seems like this revision is passing more money to policing and putting it off for next year's budget. Not clear if, it looks like it's under the Cures money, the federal grant money for coronavirus relief, and that seems like a really inappropriate way to spend that instead of actually helping the community. We still don't have a homeless shelter in Urbana, and it seems like this money could be spent so much better than increased policing. And also this parking fund, it seems like it's, the city's losing money on enforcing parking. And from my observations, living here most of my life, we don't have a crazy parking shortage. This isn't Chicago. And it seems like we don't need this fancy metering system and to be paying people to enforce the meters when the city has been continuously losing money on it. And it seems unwise to have this other $250,000 investment in new meter infrastructure when it's expected that the city is going to be $800,000 in the negative on the parking fund for next year. So it really doesn't make any sense to me. I encourage you to really question and evaluate this revision and generally just how we spend our money in the city budget. I also want to talk about item H, the resolution against utility shut-offs. Thanks for passing this first kind of round last meeting, and I hope that this official resolution passes again tonight. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. John Kraft?
Yes, good evening. I'm here to, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm here to criticize L.K. Mahary and Kurt Borman.
Mr. Kraft, would you please refrain from calling out staff members by name? Please say city staff.
I'm going to talk about Kurt Borman first. Kurt Borman has been sending demands for photo, government-issue photo identification for people that request information under FOIA. And I don't know, I don't know what statute gives him the authority to do that. People can request anonymously under the Freedom of Information Act. And Mr. Borman, who is allegedly the assistant city attorney, is sending out these demands. Well, there's no basis in statute for you guys to require a government-issued photo ID. I mean, it's really hard to understand why the city would endorse him doing that. Says right here, if the city is unable to confirm your identity at this time, we'll require you to present a government-issued photo ID. You don't, you don't have the authority to identify somebody that submits a FOIA request. What law firm gave that crazy idea? I guarantee it wasn't the Attorney General. And then, and then you got L.K. McCary. I don't know who she is, but apparently she's the assistant city clerk. Sit, or he's the, whatever, whoever it is. $20 for 2.73 megabytes of data, plus $7.97 for a flash drive. Why not email it? Somewhere in this email FOIA, the city alleges, falsely alleges, that they can't email the documents because they have to identify the FOIA requester. That is a lie. You're lying to the public. You're lying to the FOIA-requestor. And you should counsel L.K. McCary for lying to people. That's not in the statute. You can't demand identification before you email something. You used to email FOIA requests before you got a new FOIA officer. What happened? Is it because the guy is a retired police officer and, and people are asking for police records? You're trying to stifle information going to the public. You're not being transparent. And somebody requested seven dash cam videos, and you send them a bill for $702.66. What in the world is that? You should have charged them less than $3 for the DVDs. This might be the one that the AG already told you you couldn't charge them. But who in their right mind, L.K. Mahary?
Mr. Kraft, please address your comments to the city as a
I'm addressing the individuals, and if you don't like it, you can shut me off. But $700, that's extortion, in my opinion. Here's another one, .325 megs of data for $27.97. A simple email would have solved that problem. .533 megs for, for $20. Another one from L.K. Mahary. I really don't understand what's going on here, and I'll be back at your next meeting to finish up these FOIA requests that I received from you guys. Thanks.
Tracy Chong?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi, I'm Tracy Chong from Urbana. Today, the city released the ad for the Listening Sessions on the Use of Force Policy Revision. There's a link to what Chief Seraphin and the city label as the Use of Force Policy, Chapter 300, which is the document that the city and UPD wants to be the basis of the public discussion. This is a pretty dis, ingenious move by Chief Seraphin. As Chapter 300, the Use of Force Policy link is just a very superficial document with generic statements like, officers shall use only the amount of force that reasonably appears necessary, given the facts and circumstances perceived by the officer at the time of the event. And also even more administrative type of policy, like reporting the use of force and follow-up review. However, what's concerning is that this superficial generic document does not actually cover any of the types of force that an officer can use and the associated policies. The actual use of force policies are the ones that talk about handcuffing and restraints, Taser policy, firearms. This chapter describes guidelines for deploying a patrol rifle. Also, Chapter 305, which talks about the serious uses of force and in custody deaths, which describes a policy regarding investigation of an incident in which a person is injured or dies as a result of an officer-involved shooting. The next one is a big one, Chapter 303, Control Devices and Techniques. This policy includes baton guidelines, smoke canister guidelines, kinetic energy projectiles. And this policy even has a baton chart for showing how police officers can achieve escalation of trauma by vital and vulnerable striking areas, which includes target areas that would produce long-lasting, rather than temporary injuries, which include unconsciousness, seriously, serious bodily injury, shock, or even death. My question is, why are these actual use of policies not highlighted to the public to facilitate the discussion? How can we have a meaningful discussion with productive results if the city is steering the public away and instead pointing them to the most generic introductory policy and not the actual use of force guidelines? Does UPD and the city, rather the public, not know about or discuss these use-of-force tactics? My second comment is regarding the CPR discussion that will happen tonight. As we all know, Carol Mitten and Chief Seraphin have been using all kinds of creative interpretation of the CPR ordinance to deny complaints. However, in the latest events, Carol Mitten herself violated CPR the ordinance. And she had audacity to argue that it was okay for herself to violate this ordinance.
Ms. Chong, please keep your comments confined to city staff in general.
And that it was not a big deal. So I predict in the report tonight, Carol Mitten will once again blame members of the public for burdening the board with complaints, and Carol Mitten will once again shame the public. She'll shame them just like she shames residents that care about policing issues and file FOIA requests. So instead of just blindly listening to what Carol Mitten says and looking at it that way, I would like you to think about, why? Why are there not numerous complaints filed by a broader range of the public, especially since there has been so much public outrage about the police? Is it because the system is broken? Is it because the public, at this point, knows about the hurdles created by city staff like Carol Mitten?
Thank you, Ms. Chong. We'll go on to Megan McDonald.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. I'm Megan McDonald. I'm from Word 5. I thought I might keep it short tonight, but we'll see. I just want to slowly go over what you've said you would either give money to or take money away from since, when was that, that we discussed that, June or July? So things you said you want to give money to. More money to the police. You want to give money to Visit Champaign County. You want to give yourself raises. Mariah was here, I believe that was last week, no, it was two weeks ago, from By Black Shambana, a black woman-owned business focused on directing folks to other black-owned businesses and has built that directory from the ground up. But not only did you vote to give the money to the company, the corporation, the platform who lifted her work, you actively decided not to hear Mariah's side out. That was very disappointing and very undemocratic, in my opinion. So again, things you've wanted to give money to, the police, yourselves. Visit Champaign County. You've been very concerned with COVID. You've been very concerned with local businesses and restaurants. Things you've done as far as anti-racism work since George Floyd's murder, nothing. You've got black businesses, neighborhoods, initiatives that you've given money to, zero. I see Green Street Realty building up apartments every year. I know that they got a ton of money from the state as far as coronavirus relief. I think they got almost a million dollars, maybe 300K to $1 million. Yeah, so who's going to live in these apartments? Why can't we build a homeless shelter in Urbana? Why do we keep giving this land and this space to landlords and people that don't care about the people who live in this town? I don't want to see one dime of city money going to create, quote unquote, innovative outdoor shelter options for eating when winter comes and it's cold. And we're all like, oh, how are we going to save local businesses? I don't want to see any city money going to that. I want city money to be going to homeless shelters and feeding the people that have no place to go. I don't understand how you can change the public input rules without providing an example of said abusive language. City staff has defamed Aliyah Lewis. They have propped up their own police, spending money and time to prove that beating on a small 21-year-old black woman is totally within the UPD's right. I also want to say that I hope you listen to Grace and know that every budget amendment, every dollar spent is going to be looked at and scrutinized by your constituents. I hope you listen to Allen. We need you to pass resolutions that deem shutting off utilities that contributes to a public health crisis. Every time a person's utilities is shut off, but you push for assistance to local businesses or yourself will know that you care more about money than people because people aren't going to be able to make it to work or shop or spend money to eat if they can't bathe, if they can't leave their house, yada, yada. I hope you listen to John Kraft. It seems like you're peeing off your constituents just to protect your egos, your goals of holding up police power and carrying on business as usual. But you didn't sign up for this job because you thought it would be easy, right? You signed up because you love this city and you wanted to get a better town for everyone, right? Well, that includes the black youth that are being beaten and derailed by your police. It includes John Kraft and me and other people that you may not look forward to hearing from every week. We all live here. I'm going to wrap it up, so thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Drake Matier.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Oh, wait, 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 wait. Put my headphones in. So you all can hear me perfectly well. Hello, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Drake Matier. I am a graduate senior in the College of AHS, Community Health, at the University of Illinois. And I'm calling concerned with what is about to happen this winter. As Megan was saying, you should listen to Allen regarding utility shut-offs. Because again, this is going to be a cold winter. And if utilities continue to be shut off and heat becomes an issue, you're not only going to see people get frostbite, but apparently, due to research that I'm sure you all have not done, heat is actually a major reason for domestic violence. Food insecurity is a main reason for domestic violence. When sports lose, that's a major reason for domestic violence. So I think you should all tell the university to stop playing sports too because they suck. But anyway, go back to what I really want to talk about. That Lincoln Mall. That Lincoln Mall sits empty. Nothing goes on in there. However, you have 141 documented homeless people here in Champaign County. 141. Now, we have a whole bunch of apartment complexes, but again, you all love to bend over backwards for landlords. So let me give you a better one. How about we open up Lincoln Mall and other spaces for emergency housing? Again, emergency housing. I would like to see public housing all together, but I know you all are stingy and not good people. So I know you won't push for public housing altogether forever. But I think emergency housing is something the least that you all could do. I am in contact with other organizations and churches to actually help put pressure where pressure needs to be. I'm sure you all have the money to build a homeless shelter, but since you all have refused to do that, I believe that there needs to be some space out there that can be opened up for the public, for the community, for the people that really need it. There's some more research that I'm sure you all should know about. But domestic violence has actually increased due to coronavirus. Again, another reason is because of food insecurity. It's getting wetter and it's cold. Primarily, that is black women and children that are more susceptible to actually being homeless. So yes, I don't know if you are. I understand that you all don't think black women matter because you obviously don't think Aliyah Lewis matters. So I wouldn't expect anything less than that. However, however, I believe that it is necessary for you all to address food insecurity, homelessness, and domestic violence as some of the top three issues here in Champaign County. I have an idea for you all. A diversion program that reduces police power, depowering the police, removing them from domestic violence situations, probably implementing a social worker into the system and actually implementing individuals in intimate partner violence within the community. Have programs for transformative justice. Actively give them food. I had a resolution go through Illinois Student Government, and I'm putting petitions together right now. I'm sure you all should be able to do that too, to force the university to up some food, right? So they can feed people. When you all get, when officers get calls for like Aliyah Lewis and they get calls, let's say Richie Turner, and they get calls on homelessness, do you all show up with blankets, water, food, snacks? Or do you show up with guns? Do you show up with white men with guns looking to terrorize people? That is an issue. Again, you all have a whole bunch of empty spaces that can definitely be used to house some people. Let's call up the CUPHD, the Public Health Department, so we can get some sanitizing, some emergency sanitizing. What's it called? Showers for the people. These are vulnerable populations that will only increase due to the negligence of Number 45 and due to the negligence of J.B. Prisker and due to the negligence of the Urbana City Council and even the Champaign City Council. And I leave with that. Thank you.
Eddie Pratt, Jr.
Am I coming through clear?
Yes.
All right, good evening, good evening. Well, last time I spoke, I painted a picture that is a microcosm of what happens across this country. Crime doesn't happen just because. Crime is the absolute equation of both desperation meets need, meets opportunity, or the like thereof. So just like other people have alluded to on this call, you have a situation, especially with COVID and all that has put people in a situation with their jobs and job security in which a lot of people cannot pay their bills during this time. That is going to help crime to rise. And we've already seen this play out throughout the summer. This council has the opportunity to create an example for not only the state of Illinois, but for the country at large. You can put together care packages or things like what I did when me and a couple of my people came out and aided the homeless. But really, we don't have the money that you do. So the things that we can do are only reactive to the things that you don't do. And just like Drake just got finished saying, there is a surplus of housing available. You can end homeless in one day. You literally could. I wonder why it takes so long for that to happen? When you're charging people to park their cars and constantly losing over $100,000 yearly, but refusing to help the homeless, it says something about the priorities of this city. I'm deeply angered by it, to be completely honest. And it's more than disappointing. It's hard for me to believe in the leadership of the city that I lived in and have lived in for the last six years when I know that these things are happening. There is a resolution that is being passed in another county to end utility shut-offs. I hope to God that you will all vote the same way and pass it here because people need it. And if it doesn't happen, what you will see happen is an increase in crime, be it domestic violence, robbery, assault, maybe even murder. Because when you push people's backs against the wall, they swing. And they swing for everything they have. You have a chance to be good neighbors today. You have a chance to be good people today. You have a chance to carry out the will that we're all taught in the Bible about loving your neighbor, about being accountable, showing people what community really is supposed to be. You have that chance today. Reality is, you've always had that chance. So I'm pleading with you. And I plead and beg for nobody, but I'm pleading with you to do the right thing. Take care of the people that you lead, that you are here to represent. Because if you're not willing to do that, then perhaps you shouldn't be in the position that you're in. We all deserve more. We all deserve more from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Bo Barber.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I just wanted to call in for support for the resolution to prevent utility shut-offs. In the month of October, in a recent report, there was 47 residential shut-offs from Ameren, Illinois, just in the Urbana zip code. And and that's not 47 people, that's 47 households. So there could be, you know, upwards of at least twice that amount. There could be upwards of at least twice that amount of people. Either way, as Mr. Pratt pointed out in the previous part here, you know, this leads to, this leads to, this leads to problems in the community. This leads to this, I just came in from outside and it's cold as heck. And this is going to be a problem. It's cold. You don't have power. You don't got heat. You don't got, you can't stay warm. People get desperate. And you have, you have the, you know, you have the ability to do something tonight, but hopefully passing this resolution to try and take, you know, some kind of stand against letting that happen. But I mean, heck, even in my household, we had a recent scare because I had a false positive COVID test. And that was scary. That was incredibly scary. I have two elderly parents. I was scared to death that I was going to lose them. And luckily, I was able to isolate, stay separate from them. And it, you know, turned out that it was a false positive. But, you know, the whole thing of trying to make sure I was isolated and make sure the resources were there, that I had to just keep going. CUPHD was very helpful with that, although there was occasionally sometimes, I think, a miscommunication, but neither here nor there. The problem is, is that, you know, during this pandemic, when people get their power shut off, they're already in dire straits, even outside of a pandemic. But then in a pandemic, if you end up getting this virus, there was an activist down in Southern Illinois around that area that had COVID-19. And in the peak of her symptoms with a plus 100 fever, had her, had her utility shut off. And it's just, it's just mind-boggling that that was allowed to happen. So I strongly encourage you that you pass this resolution tonight. Because it would, it will help, it will help many people. It will help many people during this pandemic. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Last up is Rita Connerly.
Good evening, City Council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Council. My name is Rita Connerly, and I reside in Champaign, a neighboring city to Urbana. I come to the council tonight, and I'm not prepared, as I generally would like to be, however I am concerned about your governance. Your policies are unethical. The way in which you display yourself before the public, Diane, unprofessional, unethical, and you are incompetent. One moment. I'm sorry, let me repeat that. The way in which you display yourself here before the public, Diane, unprofessional, unethical, and incompetent. How dare you huff at the public's comment and opinion, voicing their concerns about things that you don't see and sharing their thoughts on what changes should be made? My question is, when does your behavior start to reflect that you care about the people in this city? You stated, and I quote, "Our top priority always is to get the business of the city done." And that includes addressing and making a work, making and working toward the changes that people want to see in our community. But does your actions reflect that? Those of you that have viewed the world from a comfortable distance, not color-blinded, but merely turning the other cheek, do you consider using your privilege? Thank you, John Kraft, for speaking to the unprincipled staff that practice what they want and not what the city's policies are. Carol Mitten, she will continue to provide a disservice to our community. Why? We all know who gives them the authority to act in the manner in which they all do. Diane.
Ms. Connerly, please address your comments to city staff in general.
What's going on here is the city's failure to be truthful and to be transparent. Just like the use of forced listening sessions, that was not shared widely, but thankfully, to caring individuals, someone shared that information to me. How many other private discussions are being withheld from public constituents that need to know? As a black, Latina, and indigenous woman, mother, activist, and a victim survivor of domestic violence and currently being victimized by the police in Champaign, I am asking Urbana to do better. You have the authority to make changes and to do the right thing. Two weeks ago, I allowed my 14-year-old daughter to speak on what she's seen. We've all seen the video. And as Megan stated, Aliyah Lewis, a 21-year-old black female, beat by your officers with no punishment, but instead, she's the one facing penalty. I've been on several calls where I've heard the city staff attack this woman. Just a few weeks back, Carol Mitten ridiculed some of the public commenters. When will you really make a change? Start by looking in the mirror. You wake up every day. Again, use your privilege to end your privilege. Thank you and have a great day.
Okay, that concludes public comment for tonight. We'll move on to unfinished business. Seeing none. Reports of standing committees, Sharice Hersey.
Hello, okay. We have several resolutions and ordinance that's to pass or bring through to the city for your approval. Resolution number 2020-10-0949R, a resolution setting as official policy the Vision Zero goal of reducing loss of life or serious injury to 2-0 on our transportation system by 2030. And this was brought to us by Councilmember Brown. Bill, did you want to speak to this at all?
Just briefly, there was a couple of small revisions reflecting the discussion from last week. The most significant one was in the resolved part, Section 2. It clarified that how many times we would meet and we would meet as a task force, the pedestrian advisory, Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Commission would meet using our regular time as a task force. And that any new projects that weren't already part of the capital improvement plan or city budget would be planned in the Vision Zero plan to utilize outside funding. So that's be planned in the Vision Zero Plan to utilize outside funding. So that's uh and that clar- that clarifies more, that speaks more to the original intent of the resolution that you asked us to draft. So I think, um, should be self-explanatory, but if there's any questions, I'm willing to try to answer.
Are there any questions for Bill before, uh, ask for a motion? Okay, um. I'd like to move for, uh, I'm sorry, is there a motion on table?
Well, you would, you would make the motion, Sharice.
Okay, so I like the motion, sorry. I can move for um the resolution number twenty twenty dash ten dash zero four nine R, a resolution setting as official policy. The Vision Zero goal of reducing loss of life or serious injury to zero on our transportation system by thirty thirty. Uh, move for approval.
I'll second that.
It's actually twenty, twenty thirty.
Twenty thirty, I'm sorry.
And it's moved by Sharice and seconded by Bill Brown.
Are there any questions, any discussion? Okay, clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next item, Sharice.
The next item is ordinance number twenty nineteen dash zero eight dash zero four zero. An ordinance amending the Urbana zoning ordinance omnibus text amendment two. Plan case number two three seven seven dash T dash one nine. And that was brought to us by Community Development. Uh, is there one, anyone here to speak to that? Lily?
Could we get a second for that, please, Sharice?
Okay.
Yes.
I'll second that one, Dennis Roberts.
Okay, moved by Sharice, seconded by Dennis. Okay, great.
Okay, uh, discussion, Lily, would you like to um
Yeah, I just wanna, I just wanted to follow up really fast on um the question about MOR and open space. Um, and there was a earlier message sent out about it with an explanation and an example, but basically, um, the, the text amendment is suggesting to to strike the opens and open space at the end of a sentence in an MOR requirement that really talks to the lot width and is of any zoning lot in MOR. Um, the lot width and area of a zoning lot really is affecting the floor area ratio, but not the open space required ratio. So that requirement still exists in the area, it's just not something that that particular regulation um speaks to. So therefore, just make clearing, clearing things up in a lot of other, you know, small amendments in the omnibus. That section is, was proposed to be stricken.
Any questions for Lily? Okay.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded.
Oh, Sharice, that's my, that's my job.
I'm sorry.
So it's been moved and seconded. Um, if there's no further questions, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Okay, also moving for the approval of council ordinance number twenty nineteen dash zero eight dash zero four one. An ordinance amending the Urbana zoning ordinance omnibus text amendment number three, Plan Case two three eight um, four dash two dash one nine, also brought to us by City Council. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Dennis. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Also bringing uh to the council for approval. Um, solution, a resolution number twenty twenty dash ten dash zero five zero R. A resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an economic development agreement. Champaign County Economic Development Corporation for um FY twenty twenty to twenty twenty one. From city, uh, Community Development.
I'll second it.
Moved by Sharice, was that Bill Colebrook?
Uh, myself and Mary Alice, either one.
Well, I heard Bill Colebrook and we'll we'll go with that.
Any discussion?
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Okay, for council's approval, number, ordinance number twenty twenty dash ten dash zero five seven. An ordinance amending certain Urbana city code sections to reflect changes in laws governing cannabis and cannabis paraphernalia use and possession. Uh, is there a second?
Certainly, I'll do that.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Dennis. Any discussion?
Jim, I'm sorry.
Mary Alice?
Was there any follow-up about the, uh, the nuisance, the aggravated nuisance and um and renter? Is there any follow-up about that?
Again, I didn't hear.
I had a question about this nuisance defined, um, for the aggravated public nuisance here. Uh, in terms of the number of violations, and how does that put, does it put landlords, uh, in a spot if they have tenants that are in non-compliance that are causing these things?
Um.
Here, I can, I can actually answer.
Okay.
I can answer that. Um, this aggravated nuisance ordinance has been used in the past to work directly with landlords when we've had properties with, with issues, usually elevated crime levels, and the provisions of the ordinance actually hasn't been implemented very often at all, but it's used to, um, kind of as a as a way to motivate property owners to cooperate with the city in implementing some safety practices. It could be lighting, it could be focusing on landscaping, it could be on different management practices. But it hasn't actually been applied in very many instances at all, but it's there, it's a tool in the toolbox if we need to use it.
So do landlords have the ability to evict people if they have more than two violations?
It depends on their lease, depends, most of the leases do provide landlord the right to evict if their tenants are committing crimes. Uh, they don't rely on the ordinance to evict, they rely on the language of the lease. Following up with Diane's uh comments. Actually, the city has been, at least since I've been here, and it's, as Diane and the mayor indicated, a few instances only. Um, it has been very successful. It brings landlords to the table, uh, not under threat. But to discuss issues that they're aware of, and the city can deploy resources as well. As I say, there have been a number of developments and, you know, apartment buildings, uh, that have come, you know, to our attention. And it's a very good ordinance. As far as the cannabis goes. Obviously, landlords can, unless somehow they put in their lease, but I don't think they can. Uh, cannot evict for people who are using cannabis legally. That is not part of the, um, that's not part of the uh aggravated public nuisance. Now, if they're using the cannabis in an area that's not their apartment. I think landlords do have the right to regulate that aspect like smoking, but they have to be very, very, very careful on that.
So it sounds to me like it depends on the lease, how the lease is written in terms of.
In terms of tenant landlord relationships, it is the lease that governs. It is, the ordinance is directed, in essence, between the city and its concern for concentrations of crime and the landlord.
Okay, alright.
Landlords have, have, when they've had problem tenants, have in fact, uh, evicted the tenants either before or as part of our discussions, but that's up to them to do.
Okay, alright.
Sharice?
So, does this have to do more also, um regarding maybe if, if, uh, if a tenant is found to be dealing drugs out of an apartment? Not just cannabis, but anything?
Well, you know, unlicensed cannabis, but if a tenant is dealing drugs or manufacturing drugs, yes. But we deal with the landlord. We don't deal with the tenant in that respect. Uh, it's the landlord that has to take care of their property. Uh, and so we will ask the landlord to, you know, correct the problem that's perceived.
Okay.
Again, it's an issue of landlord-tenant lease.
Dennis?
And, uh, the basic reason for this resolution is to align our local cannabis, cannabis regulations with that of the state, which has changed currently to uh, recognize the use of medical marijuana and legal, legal possession of marijuana paraphernalia.
As well as, if I missed, maybe I missed a conjunction there, as well as adult use cannabis within the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act. Absolutely. In fact, we are required to adopt this, but this kind of fell through the cracks. It was gonna be on an agenda back in February. But with the coronavirus and all the different uh things that you all have been dealing with, uh, meeting in and meeting out. Other things took priority. There's been no enforcement contrary to the Cannabis Regulation Tax Act or the Medicinal Cannabis Act. So, you know, this has been, you're waiting to go.
Yeah, so one might imagine this as being somewhat of a liberalization of the regulation, because that's what the state has done.
It's required. It's not, this is not really a discretionary. Uh, there's a home rule, uh, preemption provision in the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act. Uh, we cannot impose any stricter regulations locally than in the state. So your basis is correct, Dennis.
Okay, any other questions? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Sharice?
Next, we have resolution number twenty twenty dash ten dash zero five one R. A resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement records management system, UPD.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Mary Alice?
Oh, I know this came up in public comment in terms of the amount of money that we're spending for the police, and I just uh, would like the public to know that this is a forty-year-old system. That we have to, has, something has to be done with it. It's a system that's used across multiple agencies across the um the city. I believe this intergovernmental agreement, correct me if I'm wrong, places this in the hands of Champaign instead of Urbana. Urbana's been running arms, and so now this is transferring that kind of oversight into Champaign, but it is a source that is also um, not only split amongst all the municipalities, but I believe there's also DOJ grants that covers the cost of half of it. So I just wanted to kind of add that to the public if they had questions about why we're going through with this.
Any other questions? Sharice?
Just to piggyback on what Mary Alice was saying, yeah, the, it's, the city of Champaign is the lead agency. And it'll all be, also be used by the Champaign County, the Village of Rantoul, the University of Illinois, as well as Urbana. So this is um, uh, a system that's being put in place so that um multiple jurisdictions will be able to track and trace a, a violent crime or perpetrator, if possible. Um, that's my understanding from reading the, the information.
Does staff want to add anything?
Both Mary Alice and Sharice are correct. This is almost a forty-year-old system. Um, this does go into the city of Champaign's hands, um, and this is, this is a replacement for a homegrown system that we have, so um, they're all correct on all those parts.
And our programmers are retiring who had been maintaining this system, so um, we're, we're long overdue for an upgrade. Uh, any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Bringing for your approval ordinance number twenty twenty dash ten dash zero five six. An ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, budget amendment number three, Omnibus Finance.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Moved by Sharice, um, seconded by Dennis. Um, there was a question raised last week about the expense for police medical services was for, it's um it's for a total of six thousand eight hundred eighty-five dollars. Um, this is one-third the cost of triennial physicals for police officers. So every three years, they get a very thorough physical. And each year for three years, a portion is set aside to cover that expense, so that's what this is for. Uh, Jared?
So, uh, some folks had brought up the question about the, the parking, and there's two points on that. Uh, one of which is the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar expenditure on meter. I'm guessing it's a replacement, but we didn't see that in the memo, and nobody discussed it, so like to get a little more information on what that two hundred and fifty K is for, and I'd also appreciate to hear something from staff about the eight hundred thousand net loss on that item as well. Um, that we're predicting for uh, the FY twenty final budgets. And I've got one other question as well after those.
I'll do my best on those. Um, the, um, the two hundred and fifty thousand is, is um parking meter replacement that we had planned to do in the previous fiscal year and didn't have the manpower to, to get it done. And, um, we are predicting a significant loss in parking revenue. Um, a combination of the fact that we haven't been charging for parking, but now that we are again, just the utilization is way down. And um, that is impacted in a, in a separate fund, in the parking fund, and we'll just have to manage our way through that.
Uh, I know, I'm guessing Elizabeth isn't here, um, so she can't answer this, but perhaps we can pass this along. Um, I'd be interested to see our, our long-term, uh, or at least five-year, if not ten-year um, projections or reports on what we've been able to accomplish with parking. Because, I mean, that's a, that's a significant loss, and if it's an unprofitable enterprise, then, you know, uh, if we're not at least I know we're not a business profit, but, you know, if we're losing a lot of money to charge people for parking and spending a lot of money to hire, hire people to enforce parking. Uh, perhaps it's something we need to, uh, take a closer look at, and I'll, Mary Alice has got something else, but I'll come back to my other question. Thanks.
So, can I, I just say, you're absolutely right, and we, and we have been looking at that, so um, we're happy to make some projections and and um, see, see where we might be on that, but we are, but you're but we are, but you're absolutely right. It's the money that we spend to do enforcement is, we, we have to look carefully at what the return is on that, so.
And that 250,000, sorry, Mary Alice, that is for meter replacement?
Yeah, meter head replacement.
Oh, so.
The meter, the mechanisms in the meters are also, you know, they're, they're not, the mechanisms are not going to be supported anymore by the company that makes them, so we have to make a decision. We may end up doing more mobile meters than we had originally anticipated, but for now, we need to move the money from one fiscal year to, to the other to be able to spend it.
Okay, I'll reserve my other comments on that for council. I will have another question, but I'll wait.
Okay.
Mary Alice, you had a question?
Yeah, so I actually pulled up the fund balance on the parking fund, so it looks like we have averaged about 1.4, 1.5 million dollars in, in collection for service. So there's actually two places in the budget where parking shows up. One is in the fund statement for the parking fund, and then the second part is in the finance department where we have the personnel and the cars that we use. So we spend approximately $263,000 a year in terms of personnel and cars. We make approximately 1.4 million dollars in fees. The reason, it says that we have a negative balance of $799,000. It looks like 600,000 of that is for capital outlay for this fiscal year. So I guess my question, so the fund balance is still positive, and the fund balance is over half a million dollars after you take out the $200,000 capital outlay. So why do we have a 600,000 capital outlay in the parking fund, and now we have an additional 250,000?
The, is, is the 600,000, that's, that's projected or that's in the past? Because I, I could answer to, say again?
Proposed.
Oh, okay. I'd have to, I'll have to ask Public Works staff. I don't know. I know we have been working incrementally on the parking deck, and it may be some improvements to the parking deck. I just don't know the answer off the top of my head.
So if I, if I look at the fund balance, that would mean that right now with the $600,000 that we have in the capital outlay, which was proposed, if we include 250,000 to that, that would leave us with a balance in that fund of about 250,000. Does that sound right to you, Carol?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I'm just not as conversant as I'd like to be given that you're asking kind of detailed questions, so.
I just pulled up the budget, so I thought I would look at the numbers here specifically. I guess my big question is, why do we have the $600,000 in the capital outlay, and does that include the 250,000? Otherwise, why did we be moving the 250,000? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I, I believe that the 250 was for meters in particular. It was budgeted for last year. It was not spent last year. It's being moved forward to be spent in this fiscal year. I don't know what the 600,000 is for, but I don't believe it's for meters.
Elizabeth will be back in the office next week, and we'll have her answer these questions, if that's okay.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I, I hesitate to go ahead and pass the 250,000 if you don't know what the 600,000 capital outlay is supposed to contain. I mean, I see that the capital outlay for the budget for last year was 426,000, wasn't spent, so I'm just wondering if that was carried forward, that, that amount that wasn't spent last year. So I appreciate additional details on that, and I realize that we're asking questions right now, but I would like to make an amendment to pull out that 250 until we have further details.
Let's finish up with questions, and then hold your amendment, and we'll do that. Any other questions? Jared?
I had another one, non-parking-related, on Cures money, and what were, I mean, we voted to receive it, and I'm assuming that we have to have some sort of reporting go back to the, to the state to say what, what it was that we used that money for? Is that correct? Seeing you nod, Carol. Okay, so, I guess my, my comment to staff is that I think it would be beneficial to the members of the city and probably the city council as well. I don't know if it's planned or not, but just to be clear, that we see that report going back to the state on those expenditures, so folks can see where that money went.
Okay, no problem.
A lot of folks who have an intuition about where that money is going, what it's being spent on, and we need to let everyone know what we did spend it on and what it's being used for, for reimbursement.
Not a problem.
Mary Alice, do you want to put your amendment through?
Actually, I just wanted to tell Jared that there was a release for the entire state in terms of how all that money is being used, all the things that were sent out from city and county. It's been asked for reimbursement from the states. There's actually a whole database that you can go through there, just as an FYI. But yes, I will offer my amendment unless, I think Bill Colebrook also had his hand up.
Yeah, thank you. Carol, this is for you, and this is to Mary Alice's point. My question is, is there any part of this that's time, time-sensitive as far as the parking meters? So I understand, you know, Mary Alice's point that she wants more information before she, you know, was willing to vote on, on, you know, moving the money from one fiscal year to the next, but is there any time-sensitive date that we need to be worried about? I mean, is there any contract that's pending or purchase date or anything like that that we would mess up?
No, this, waiting a couple of weeks won't be a problem.
Okay.
For asking.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for this on the floor. Did you want to make, Jared, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just have a procedural question because this is an omnibus resolution. Are we able to strike something like this out of it without voting down the whole thing? Because it has been presented as omnibus amendment, I'm just curious.
Jim, do you have an opinion on this?
Can you repeat it, please, Jared?
Yeah, just a procedural question because the, the ordinance is presented as an omnibus vote, and Mary Alice is going to make an amendment to remove part of, part of that, or is that we can do that and still pass the omnibus, or we've got, I believe, from my understanding, we've got to take the whole thing down if we're not gonna, or we're gonna hold it and we can hold it, or something along those lines if we're not gonna.
I, I'm not, I'm not aware of anything that would prohibit you from taking one item out of an omnibus any more than taking one item out of when you first adopt a budget for later consideration. The, the reason typically you don't on a freshly presented budget ordinance is it only takes a majority vote, but any amendments, omnibus or otherwise, after that require a supermajority.
Okay, thanks. Just wanted to be sure.
Thank you. Okay, do you have an amendment, Mary Alice?
Yeah, my amendment would be to remove the meter infrastructure project of 250,000 for consideration at a later date.
I'll second that.
So moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Jared. Any discussion on this amendment? Jared?
Not that it needs to be belabored on needing the information for understanding why we're doing that, besides the fact that it's obviously important that we be prudent in our expenses, given the city's budget right now, but, you know, that's 250,000, we could be putting towards a lot of, a lot of other things if, you know, that's, you know, we're always trying to talk about what our priorities are and where we're trying to spend our money, and 250,000 is nothing to snuff at, and could probably be put towards a use on a program that people have been calling for, whether that's adding something to township, or dealing with homelessness, or trying to find something for One Door, or, you know, any kind of other starter funds that can be used in another way rather than just focusing on replacing meterheads. So just wanted to say for council's consideration in, besides just trying to find out more about what exactly that is, and if that is a priority indeed for the city. Thank you.
Okay, we're, we have a motion by, by Mary Alice and a second by Jared to remove the 250,000 for the meter infrastructure replacement. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes, no problem.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. And now we go back to the main ord- motion, which is to revise the annual budget ordinance with this budget amendment. Is there further discussion on this? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mayor, do you vote on this one?
Yes, yes, I do, and I vote yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And that motion passes.
And last, we have, just making notes here, we have Resolution Number 2020-10-052R, a resolution declaring continued utility disconnections in Illinois to be a pandemic safety risk. This is brought forward by council member Jared Miller and Dennis Roberts. Moved to pass this resolution.
Any discussion? Jared, then Mary Alice?
I, I just wanted to give some suggestions to staff real quick on, you know, we're talking about what the city can do, what the city can't do. One thing that I think we can look into is whether or not we can get information from the utilities when they plan to, or when they issue disconnect notices to residents of Urbana, and keep that information available for the city to use as it's trying to figure out what it can do. I think that that's, they send most of those notices via email. Probably wouldn't be too difficult to set up a email address for the city to receive those notices, just so we can keep track ourselves of what's going on, and we don't rely specifically on them all the time to provide that data. Another thing that I think the city could look into is looking at the city code of Champaign under, what chapter is that? Chapter 12, in Section 39, Orders and Regulations. This is the same sort of verbiage that appears in their emergency ordinance under, so that's 12, Chapter 12, Section 39, and it is, where is it? Number 26, line 26, require the continuation, that's the most important word, termination, disconnection, or suspension of natural gas, electric power, water, sewer, communication, or other public utilities, or infrastructure, references therein stated in their city code. If it's in their code, there must be a reason why it's in there, and we should probably look into how that can hold legal standing and whether or not we can have that legal standing as well, whether that's in our emergency ordinance, or in adopting an actual ordinance similar to their emergency or services ordinance that would allow us the ability to prevent those shut-offs directly ourselves. Those are my two comments for direction for staff to look into things that we can do about this going forward.
Dennis?
I think it would be very important to direct staff to send the resolution once it's passed, which I'm sure we will be passing it, to the governor's office so that he knows that our community has stated this and made this, this commitment. We know we're doing it, but unless we notify the, the governor's office that this has been done, he may never hear about it or overlook it. So it's really important that we send this to his office, and I'd like to have somebody at staff make sure that it's mailed out to him, and he, so he understands that.
I'll be doing that tomorrow, Dennis. I have, I've been in pretty continuous contact with the governor's office on COVID-related issues for the past six months, so I'll send it to his staff member that I've been working with, and he's, he's been very good about getting messages to both Governor Pritzker and Dr. Zike, the director of the Public Health Department at the state.
So are you aware, aware whether other communities are doing similar resolutions across the state?
I have not heard of many other communities doing similar resolutions. I do want to remind people, as we, I think we pointed out last week, that both Ameren and Illinois American Water have voluntarily agreed to suspend shut-offs until March 31st, 2021, but it's important that customers call the utility and tell them they're experiencing hardship, and we can circulate and get that number out there. So one thing council members can do is circulate this among your constituents and make sure that these numbers are widely known. And then there also is financial assistance available through the RPC, the Regional Planning Commission, through LIHEAP, which is the Low Income Home Energy Assistance Program, and that's administered by RPC, and there is financial assistance there, and, and resources. And I've also have been in touch with Cunningham Township this morning, and we had a discussion, and then they later had a meeting with the centralized intake for the homeless. So there are discussions ongoing about homelessness prevention and what plans are being made for that during the winter, as well as the need for a 24/7 family emergency shelter and more permanent solutions for the housing, housing issues. So discussions are underway, and what's really clear is that we need to make sure that there's basically one number that people can call. Right now, there's a number of different places that people can call for help, but we need to have a centralized intake. 211 has been used, there is, there was a COVID emergency relief number, and that's being looked at too, as far as what will be the number that people can call. So, agencies, it's not just the City of Urbana, we're working very closely with Cunningham Township and our countywide partners. This is a countywide effort. It's not just City of Urbana, and it is, it is, people are working on this. But I will be sending this resolution to the governor's office as soon as it's signed and stamped tomorrow. Dennis, and then Bill.
Well, actually, can I subcede to Mary Alice? She raised her hand.
Oh, sorry, okay.
So there was a question in one of the whereas's about Patrick Hayes, General Counsel for IML. I was wondering if there was anybody who looked into that, in that clause, that whereas?
Can you say that again, please?
Sure. There was a question at the last meeting in the whereas statement that refers to Patrick Hayes, General Counsel of the Illinois Municipal League, to know if that is an accurate statement. I was wondering if anybody investigated that.
Jim reached out to the Illinois Commerce Commission, and I believe that's the information I shared with you last week, as far as that. Patrick Hayes has noted that cities that own water, gas, or electric utilities do have the power to enact a moratorium, but the Illinois Commerce Commission's position is that municipalities that don't own utilities are preempted from doing so by the state's authority.
So, is that, the question, is that whereas statement correct? I guess that's a question the city council.
Well, it seems to be referring to an opinion from a particular person.
He, Mr. Hayes is of the opinion that municipalities can seek to prevent disconnections. However, in my conversation, my communication with the, one of the attorneys for the Illinois Commerce Commission, they indicate no. You know, unless they're publicly owned utilities, privately owned utilities, they regulate tariffs, fees, and, you know, service, so.
Not, it's not. It's.
To answer your question, I, you know, that's Mr. Hayes's opinion from IML. It does not happen to be consistent with the interstate, or Illinois State Commerce Commission opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Jared?
I was just gonna, sorry, Bill Brown was, had his hand raised before me.
Okay. Go ahead, Bill.
Okay. I like the idea of looking into, see what the city can do as far as exploring the steps have been taken to try to prevent shut off. I know there are a lot of things that utilities have to go through as far as making sure people have had a chance to arrange billing programs and things like that. So I'd encourage legal department to see if there's something we can do to require documentation of that. I like the idea of notification. If we have staff to be able to try to contact someone, or if nonprofits do, we could pass on maybe that information to nonprofits to try to figure out why someone wasn't able to pay or make sure they're aware of all the help available. It's really devastating, not only risking homelessness, the devastating, devastating financial loss. I know a family that has had three members, at least, serve on our various boards and commissions that actually end up losing their house because of a utility shut off. When utilities are shut off in the fall, they have until, I think, December 1st usually. This year, it sounds like they're going to voluntarily, maybe not shut off all winter, but normally they have until, like, December 1st to shut it off. Once December 1st rolls around, they aren't supposed to shut off the heat because of freezing temperatures and everything. But I know a family where it was shut off before that time. The, one of the kids, it was one of the three kids that inherited the property, lived there and just kept camping out there. And then eventually got one of those cold nights where he wasn't home. The pipes froze and ceiling from the kitchen caved in, you know, water in the basement and the whole deal. And then by the time he got home, the house was unlivable. Had to call the water company to shut it off because he wasn't sure where the shut off was. And so he was homeless, and then they ended up losing their house because they couldn't afford to repair it. So, you know, a little thing, a relatively small thing, can really turn out to be a big issue. Homes are one of, this was actually a home that used to be where Beckman Center was, and then it was moved across University Avenue when they built Beckman Center. So that family just had terrible time. And that's one of the ways, you know, that families build wealth too, is through their home. And then to have something like that happen is just really awful. I did wonder how it works if, if the landlord, you know, the person that owns the property, are they notified too? Or, I mean, if the tenant's responsible for paying the power bill and it gets shut off, and the landlord could be the one ending up with the financial loss if the pipes freeze or something. So does anybody happen to know if, maybe some of you landlords would know that?
Sometimes landlords, many times landlords will have things set up so that the power reverts to their name. This is like when the lease ends, in between tenants and that sort of thing. So, so that's typically how you, how you get it set up with a landlord.
So they could directly at least protect their property that way?
Right, and that's, yeah, yeah.
Well, thanks for that. And, yeah, I would encourage, encourage us to look at. I know there's, our hands are probably tied on a lot of those issues, but I think some, there are some things we can do as far as notification goes.
Dennis?
Besides the fact that Ameren is voluntarily not doing shut offs until March, end of March, I guess it is, that doesn't tell us any information about whether the tenant is going to be held responsible for back heating bills when the power is returned to service. Because if they're unemployed, I don't think that there's a forgiveness out by Ameren of the bills for the heating, and that eventually those could be due at some time in the future. That could become a multi-thousand dollar bill for an individual who's not been employed for a while. And that's the other concern we ought to have as a community for considering shut offs that were caused by people who lack subsidence and jobs to pay their bills.
Jim?
I think it would be helpful, if we can, to get a copy of the agreements that the Illinois Commerce Commission entered into with Ameren and Illinois American Water. I don't know if they contain payment plan issues. I know a lot of the eviction-type moratoriums do provide that the tenants are not permanently relieved of paying their rent. My guess is, Dennis, as you suggest, that utility users likewise. Now, whether there's a program built into these agreements or into the ICC regulations regarding resolving unpaid bills that mount up, I, my guess is that would be by agreement, and we'll see. And I can also reach out again to the ICC and ask their thoughts on it as well.
I'd appreciate that, that'd be very nice.
Jared?
Just, so folks know, you know, though Ameren does have the thing they've always had about not doing shut offs after December 31st until whatever the date is in March. Currently, even still, though they're offering these voluntary things, they're not automatic. You have to call them and tell them, and you have to either enter into an agreement with them about payment plans, or you have to get funding through LIHEAP. There's multiple actions that people have to take. So Ameren definitely likes to make it sound like, you know, these things are, you know, we're voluntarily doing it. No, they're not. They're happy to shut people's utilities off. And they are currently shutting people's utilities off unless people are taking action. And a lot of people just don't know about it. They don't know what they need to do, and it just happens. So, you know, everything that we can do to help try and stop these things from happening is, is super important. And Jim, I've got, I'll shoot you a message here in a, in a minute of the memo when they announced the agreement from the ICC, and that might have a direction for where that agreement is.
Thank you. I do think, as I recall when I was researching this, you know, quite a bit ago, about whether the city can undertake its own utility shut off moratorium. The December 1, and I believe it ends March 31 or April 1st, that's the shut off of heat anyway, is a state law. So they're not being magnanimous about that. They are by law required to provide that. But the agreement covers the pre-December 1 period, which is obviously in effect now. And it's pretty cold out there tonight. And thank you for sending that to me.
Sharice?
Yeah, I just basically have a comment because another thing that I, I think that's good about us passing this resolution is, yes, Ameren volunteered. Volunteer does not necessarily mean that they, they will do it. But the other thing is that Ameren, I don't know about anyone else, but a couple of years ago, the meter on our house was updated so that they don't even have to send anybody out to the house to turn off your, your utilities. They do it remotely. And it is not, I don't think that, that in this particular time with the pandemic and so many people unemployed and, and hurting to just survive, that is, I don't know what kind of notification they send you. I guess they send you a notice. I've seen notices of, 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 you know, them turning off your stuff. But do they have any, I'd just like to know if they have anything different in, to also requiring, regarding the pandemic and if, if there are in fact, not just payment plans, but possibly even some relief for especially people who have ended up losing their jobs regarding this pandemic. Because they don't, they no longer have to come to your house, you know, to do it. They can just do it pushing a button someplace else. So that's one thing I would like to know as well, is that if, are, are, why are there not any special conditions, actually? Because this is not a normal time. This is not something that we have had to deal with every year. This is a first time for everybody, and we're all just working our way through this. And, but utilities are needed always. And that's, that's, that is something that's needed in particularly now because of the fact that it, it can be, it can cause seriously, serious health issues for, for people not to have their, their utilities. And I think it's even more important now that we, we know what, what their policy, maybe what their policy is regarding just this particular situation.
The moratorium agreements, the voluntary moratorium agreements, may provide that. I think that's the starting place. I will reach out this week to start out with Ameren, or the ICC, actually, and ask, you know, these questions that y'all are raising, and see what, if they have a response to them, and I'll. Ameren and Illinois Water recognize, like we all do, that we are in an unusual time, and it looks like it's getting worse again. So all we can do is reach out and ask.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any more discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. And again, we'll send this directly to the governor's office and the director of the Public Health Department, State of Illinois. That concludes the committee of the whole report. Thank you, Sharice. Reports of special committees. Seeing none. Reports of officers. Carol, did you want to update council on the new use of force listening sessions?
Sure, and I'm gonna try to share my screen and show the front of the website, or the website, there we go. Does that come through?
Yes.
Okay. So this is the, this is the landing page for the use of force policy revision. And I would just like to highlight, we, we would ask people to help us advertise the listening sessions, which are scheduled, there will be two on November 12th. The first one from 1:30 to 3:30 in the afternoon is for youth in particular. And then there'll be one from 5:30 to 7:30 that same evening. And then the following day on November 13th from 3:00 to 5:00. So we're looking for as many people to participate as would like. We have some links to information that we think would be useful to folks, and you can, you can find all of that here on, on the side you can click through. And there's also a, and this page is easy to find. It's urbanaillinois.us, and it's slash UOFpolicy. We hope that's easy to find. And then we have a email address that we also hope is easy to find called useofforcepolicy@urbanaillinois.us. And that's for any suggestions that people would like to make. They don't need to be limited to the use of force policy. If you think it's germane, if you want to talk about other policies, that's fine. And those, any responses that go to that email address will go in real time to all the members of the council. So just asking people to help spread the word about this effort.
Could you or Deputy Chief Searls address the concern about the, the one policy that was listed on that page, but other parts of the use of force policy weren't linked to?
Well, I'll, I'll start. I don't know if Rich is, is able to jump on there. There he is. The specific target of this effort is the use of force policy itself. And there were other policies that were referenced that are, that are related, given that they're methods of force, but not the, not the circumstances under which force can and should be used. So that's my layperson's response, and Rich may be able to give a more technical response. But the, the target of this effort is to rewrite the use of force policy itself. If people would like to suggest changes to others, you know, that's something that they should share with us. Rich?
Mayor, you were referring to Ms. Chong's comment about,
Yeah, yeah.
I believe it was Policy 300. I, I haven't had an opportunity to, to jump on the website yet. If Policy 300 is listed, it's gonna, I can't imagine that it wouldn't be listed in its entirety with, you know, with whatever redactions might or might not be present. So I was, I was trying to click around while Carol was talking, but I didn't make it there. So I'm not sure I can answer your question in its entirety.
You might want to look at what's on that, just to make sure everything is on that page that was intended to be there.
Yeah, I can, I can definitely double check that.
Okay, thank you.
It is the entirety of the use of force policy, but there are other policies that, for instance, when, when I think, we've had some feedback on another occasion, that the use of force policy is narrow, and there's, and maybe it should be an umbrella to bring in all of the different types of force. And so that's a comment that people can, can share with us. But right now, it's an eight-page, I believe it's an eight-page policy. But there are other policies that relate to it.
Okay, great. Mary Alice?
So, Rich, maybe you can answer this for me? So right now, everything's kind of divvied up into like chapters almost in, in police policy. And so the use of force policy is Chapter 300, I'm gonna say. So then you go into, you know, then it's 301, 302, et cetera, et cetera. So for example, taser use is in there. So just for clarification purposes, is the review of the use of force policy only 300? Or does it also include all those others within the 300?
Yeah, so that's a great question. So the Urbana Police Department actually has 163 policies. The use of force policy is Policy 300. There's a number of different policies that are under Chapter 3. That just happens to be 300. So, so 300 is specifically related to use of force, and 304 is specifically related taser. I don't remember what the others are off the top of my head. There's a number. Like I said, there's 163 policies.
Okay, so, so, yeah, the, the range, I just pulled it up here. Vehicle pursuits, officer response to calls, all those are under Chapter 3, let's just call it. So the specific one that we're taking feedback on is 300, is the very first page of it. But if, Carol, it sounds to me like if people have comments on other items within that Chapter 3, that they should certainly share them during, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're at the moment focused on those eight pages, but if people want to bring in other things, we'd like to hear that. And then we can take that feedback and, and, and decide whether we want to take action based on it. People should not feel in any way limited. We're trying to share that, that we have a focus, but it's not intended to be exclusionary.
Okay, all right, thank you. Jared?
Just for the record, I do, and I'm the one who, of course, brought that up, that we shouldn't incorporate all uses of force into a single use of force policy. Because to say that we're considering our use of force policy without actually considering all the different kinds of uses of force is disingenuous. And I do think that all those things need to be in there, especially considering most of the uses of force, as they are now, are not redacted. So there's no, I mean, there's serious uses of force and in custody deaths, that's, that's redacted. There's a couple, I think maybe at least one other one, the canines one is redacted. But many of the other ones, the firearms, the taser, control devices, handcuffing, the review boards, all of those are not redacted. And, you know, there's no reason why we couldn't, we can't incorporate those because there's no information that would be inside of those that is going to be detrimental to the reasoning behind why we redact some of those and to not wanting to let the bad guys know about our strategies in certain situations. So, you know, that's just for the record. I really, really do think that all of those things need to be considered into one broader use of force policy. Plus, it would make it, you know, easier than having 168 policies, but you could probably condense 20 of them down into one and not have to consider all 20 of them separately as different ones. So those were just my comments, thank you.
Mary Alice?
This is just a comment for Rich and Carol, and just to speak to what Jared was talking about. The actual serious use of force in custody. about, the actual serious use of force and custody deaths is, is not redacted anymore. So the title of the document needs to be updated on the website. All the redactions have been removed.
Yeah, so one of the things that we're, we've done and we're still in the, in the midst of going through it is we're in the midst of a complete policy manual review. And one of the things that I've talked to Cassie Heldman about is actually changing from posting individual PDFs of policies. I'm able to download the policy manuals, one PDF with a table of contents that's searchable and things like that. And so instead of having 163 PDFs uploaded, just have one. So we're kind of making our way through that. And the next time that we, we go through and, and update the policies, Cassie and I are talking about just taking all 163 off, putting up the one policy manual, just because it will be easier whenever we have a change. It, it, you know, there's a fresh policy manual and it's, and there's just one thing to look at.
Bill, Colbrook?
Carol, on the, the landing page that you referenced, there is a Zoom ID on there. But when I kind of looked at it when the release was sent out today, I really couldn't find where we or the public would be able to click on the Zoom link. Where, where's that going to be?
Okay, let me go back to the share screen thing just a second.
And maybe I'm just not looking at it correctly.
Well, let me go to the listening session page. And so if you go to the page where the listening sessions are, which is where I am right now, you'll see the, the actual link will,
Okay.
go highlight. And if you want to just do a direct link, that's the best spot.
Okay, thank you.
So we would ask council to share this widely. This just went live, I guess technically today. So this is, this is brand new and I want to thank Carol and the police staff as well as Kate Levy for pulling all this information together and, and making this available to the public. So please share widely and, and we hope we get a lot of feedback. Anything else on, on this one? Okay, just want to remind people, I have been getting calls again Halloween. The trick or treating hours have been set from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. There are very, a lot of public health guidelines associated with that. We'll be pushing that out on social media this week. Encourage people to remember that top priority is COVID safety this Halloween. But we'll, we'll be putting out the, reminding people of the guidelines again on social media. Okay, any other, any other officer reports? New business? We have two items. First is resolution number 2020-10-053R, which is resolution accepting an Illinois American Water firefighter grant from the Illinois American Water Company.
I don't think we have anybody on from the fire department, but this would, this is for $1,000 and it would, it would buy this piece of equipment or I guess, what do they call it? It's a, it's a training prop. It's a roof training prop. And anybody that's done Fire Ops 101 where you stand on the platform and there's plywood and you, and you pound holes, it's simulating a roof where you're letting the, the smoke come out. That's what this, that's what this grant would, would purchase is a, is a roof training prop.
Is there a motion for acceptance? Mary Alice?
Seeing as Carol and I were both on that roof together, I will move that we pass resolution number 202010053R, resolution accepting an Illinois American Water firefighter grant.
A second. Since I was on the roof with the mayor.
We demolished that roof. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. And last item of new business, well, the second item of new business is resolution number 2020-10-05R, resolution of support for an application for Illinois Transportation Enhancement Funds. This is the Baker's Lane Shared Use Path.
I'll do that, I'll do that one too. And maybe this will be my last hurrah as, as representing Public Works for, for a while. So this is our, this is a resolution requesting support from the council for the ITEP, which is the Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program Grant Submission. And the, the project that was selected as the best fit was Baker's Lane Shared Use Path. And Baker's Lane is a right-of-way that, that goes along the east side of Weaver Park between Main Street and, and Washington Street. And it would provide bicycle and pedestrian facilities that would connect the Dr. Williams Elementary School, the Kickaboo Rail Trail, offices that Champaign County has there at Brookins and several low-income neighborhoods. And this, this project was selected in part because it's, it's called out in the pedestrian master plan and the bicycle master plan, but it's not in the capital improvement plan as a priority. So, and, and I want to make a couple of corrections because there was a, a man, there was an addition error in the, in the attachment. One of the items was not added into the total. So the estimated total project cost is $249,887.50. Our share would be $49,977.50. And then there's been an addition as well to the resolution itself. And there's, we would, we would ask that you include a, a new, an additional new third whereas, which would say, whereas the city of Urbana will provide the financial commitment up to 20% of the total project cost as requested from the state of Illinois to construct this shared use path. And we've been working with the Regional Planning Commission, who has been preparing the grant application for us. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about it.
Mary Alice?
Carol, do you have a way of showing the, the map that was included in our packet? Do you have a way of showing so that the public can see exactly?
I hadn't prepped that, so I'm not so good when I don't, when I don't have things prepped. Let me see.
Well, while you do that, I can, I'll ask another question. Hopefully I don't distract you. So I think that roughly speaking, the city share would be approximately 50,000, I mean, give or take.
Yes.
Okay. And you said that that would come out of the sidewalk, the amount that we have into the budget for sidewalk repairs?
Yes. That's, that's a potential source. It's, it, it doesn't necessarily have to be that source, but that's an, that's a place where we have money that is, would be appropriate for this expense.
And do we, I, I was thinking that we only had $50,000 for replacement or repairs of sidewalks each year and each year's budget. Is that right?
You may be, you may be remembering, we, we up until this year have had multiple line items that we've now consolidated into a single line item. We would have, we had a separate capital project for brick,
Yeah.
sidewalk repair. We had a separate one for concrete and now it's consolidated into a single one. Okay, I'm gonna just go back.
100.
Say again?
Earlier it was 100 this year.
Okay, I was just trying to figure out what proportion of the overall budget would be spent if we got the grant.
Okay, and I can now share my screen and it's not, it's not going to be the same map, but it's, but it's a map and it's Weaver Park. So just bear with me a sec. So the Baker's Lane is this, is this line that's just to the east of the tree line where I'm drawing, where I'm using the, the pointer to show. It would be improving that, that right-of-way.
All right, so that doesn't overlap when we, when the Regional Planning Commission, was it the Regional Planning Commission that came and did, did the bicycle pedestrian and the, I'm sorry, the extension of the Kickaboo Rail Trail one or two weeks ago? I don't think, was that part covered in it? Bill, you might remember if that, that specific segment was covered in that overall.
Yeah, were you asking me?
Yeah, I was.
Yeah, that was one of the options. That was one of the favorite options to connect the trailhead at Weaver Park to the rail trail. I think partly because city already owns that right-of-way, it would also connect to some of the streets coming out of Scottswood there. I think there's two streets, Elm maybe and, and Illinois. It would provide some access to that neighborhood. It would also be a shortcut for people coming from farther south, like from Savannah Green and those areas. Instead of going clear down to Kench or going up Dodson, which doesn't have sidewalks, they could go up the, the side path there. So it was one of the, one of the preferred options to connect the trailhead. The ITEP funds are mostly supposed to be for transportation, not recreation. So in the application, we should emphasize how it provides a transportation connection to the rail trail, which actually the rail trail itself would serve like Walmart and some other destinations. It also creates a shortcut to get up to, say, Guardian West workplaces. So it is a, a good connection to have for bicycles and pedestrians for either commuting or for recreation, but ITEP funds specifically are more, they can be used for recreation, but the primary purpose has to be for transportation.
Bill, Colbrook?
Yeah, I think there's not a lot of downside, I don't think, to this, to this idea. I mean, I think this is all value added to the city, especially like Bill just mentioned, you know, some of those streets, there's metal, you know, sidewalks and some of them are kind of narrow of, you know, cars parked on the side. I, I just think this is, you know, just good for that part of the city.
Dennis?
We once had a conversation, I thought, with the Park District about extending, you know, the, this area that's designated now as a bike trail as a city street connectivity project. And I remember that it was the Park District that said that they were not interested in that because they owned the right-of-way and they owned the property. So could I get some clarification about whose, whose right-of-way it is? And is the Park District involved in surrendering right-of-way if, if it's on their land or is this on, this trail going to be on city property?
I believe that the Baker's Lane right-of-way is something like eight feet wide. It's, it's, it's really just intended to be more of a path. And if it were going to be a road, it would need to be something more like 20 or 30 feet wide. And then you'd be on Park District property. We did talk to them about this application and our selection of it. And, and, and to Bill's point, we, you know, we were really clear that this, this would, this is not intended to be a recreational path through the park and they may actually do something that is more recreationally oriented at some point, but this would be primarily transportation. But we, we don't have a sufficient amount of right-of-way to make it for vehicles.
Okay, well, that explains it then. Thank you.
Bill? You're, you're still muted.
Thanks. My phone just answered a question. I did have a couple of questions. I know earlier this year we talked about the intersection by Aldi and I think staff at that time said that they were planning to submit an application for ITEP. And just to be clear, the ITEP is a set aside of the transportation budget that has to be used for alternative active transportation like bicycle and pedestrians. It's, it's not, you couldn't use ITEP funding for, for streets for vehicles. But, so one, one question is the connection to Aldi, they talked about submitting an application for that. Is this, I know that ITEP is on a two-year cycle now, but I don't know if COVID threw that off. Will there be, when's the next cycle? And are we submitting this as our only application or can we submit more than one? Have we considered submitting more than one?
I don't know what the cycle, I don't know what the cycle will be going forward. I don't know that there's been any representations made about, about that. I can, I can find out for you. We had a very explicit conversation. There was a planning group, an internal staff planning group to discuss all the potential options. And given the, the, I guess, the, the, the potential number of users that would be served by this particular investment and the community in particular that would be served, staff felt that this was the best fit, as I said. But we did very explicitly talk about the, the intersection of High Cross Road and University by the Aldi and, and this was the preferred choice. We, we decided not to submit more than one just to increase our chances of getting what we, you know, our priority project.
Okay.
And, and we don't want to tax RPC to the point where they don't want to work with us and prepare our grants anymore.
Okay, yeah, I know there were a couple others. This is actually the fifth year since the bicycle plan came out. And so it was divided up into three periods, zero to five years, six to 10, and then more than 10 as far as goals. There were a couple other projects that were in this early period that haven't been funded yet. And one of them was the side path on the south side of Florida Avenue between Race and Lincoln.
Right.
And I know that's been asked for before by a lot of people. So that one would have been another one. I, I, I hope that you considered. The other thing, I know this year, and I don't know if they, they do this every year, but this year they are, they have extra state money allocated that potentially can be used to cover that 20% match. And they rate that based on several criteria, one of which is kind of a blunt tool, how close you are to census tracts with a certain number of, certain percentage, the, the census tracts with the higher percentage of people in poverty get, get, get weighted. But I say it's a blunt tool because the census tracts where, where this is, one of them includes Behringer Commons, even though it has a, you know, a low-income area, it also includes Behringer Commons, Commons, which is a higher-income area. The other census tract this is close to that would count in that has like the Lerman Neighborhood, but it also includes Stone Creek. So, you know, you get these mixes of wealthy and, and low-income areas. So project score, you know, I don't know if it really relates to the, to the people served a lot of times. Actually, when I did the calculation for the one on Florida Avenue, because of its proximity to the student population, that one turned out to be a higher community mapping score as far as being close to a higher percentage of low-income individuals. But I don't think that plays into the criteria of selection. That only plays into the criteria of whether or not your 20% match gets covered. So I did have one specific question about lighting. It seems likely that this path would be used at night to get to destinations. I didn't see anything about lighting in the budget. I, I think for, for side paths, as long as they aren't on the streets, that they're willing to cover some lighting if it's, I think the assumption is it's going to be used at, at night unless you can show why it wouldn't be. So is it too late to try to get lighting in there?
I can take that back to the group, but I remember having conversations and, and you probably know this better, but I was told that, and, and maybe it's strictly street lighting and not path lighting, but that lighting is not, or is no longer paid for by ITEP. So.
To double check that, because I understood it would be just if it was, if it was on the street, they didn't want to, they didn't want to have this be used to provide street lighting. That you, people would use an excuse that we were going to put a bike path here because we need the street lighting. But this census is not on the street, I think it would qualify, but, you know, it'd be great if you guys could look into that somewhere.
Yeah, and, and I do, I do want to say, a, a project that you mentioned on Florida is also one that we discussed. The timing of that, we're hoping there'd be another round of ITEP, you know, that, that lines up better with the timing for that project. So that's not out of the question for, for the future, but for something more immediate that served the, some underserved communities that we wanted to focus on, Baker's Lane seemed like the best fit for us this year.
Okay, and I know that row of trees, there's going to be a lot of trees taken Okay. And I know that row of trees, there's going to be a lot of trees taken out of there. Are there, was that just kind of a round number that they selected as far as the tree removals? Whether, do they plan to leave some there? Are there trees worth saving in that row?
I, I think they, they, there's been sort of a preliminary assessment that there's not a lot of high quality trees there, but to the extent that there are, and, you know, the, the path doesn't have to be a straight line. So there can be some, even if it's going to be primarily for transportation, it doesn't have to be straight, and it's probably better than not be completely straight. So there'll be a more careful assessment done of what, which trees really need to be saved. But my, my understanding is most of them are not high quality.
Yeah, they look kind of like hedgerow trees or something. I noticed one spot where the path dips into the park is kind of on a mound, a high spot. So I imagine they needed the extra room for the path coming out of Illinois Street, I think it is there, to, to make the grade, basically, to get up the hill. But I know that the park district does have like a master plan for Weaver Park. It's pretty old, and it does show a weaving path around. So if we could join forces and be, work with them on that, at least, you know, cover part of that so that they wouldn't have to do, you know, repeat it, basically. But it does seem like it would be a little bit nicer not to go exactly straight up there. But, yeah.
Yeah, as I mentioned, we, we did talk to them in devising the application.
Okay, I think that's all my questions. Thanks.
Okay, well, let's see. I don't see, I don't think we have a motion for this yet. Would someone like to make the motion? Bill?
I'll move to approve resolution number 2020-10-054R with the changes presented. Is that?
Sure.
Okay.
A second. Moved by Bill Brown, seconded by Sharice. It's further discussion. Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
I just had just one note. If you, if you do get to add the lighting, I don't think that would change the resolution. So we wouldn't have to re-vote on it or anything. It would just be a matter of when you submit the application, make sure to have it in the budget.
Any other discussion? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Harsy?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes. Last item of new business is a discussion item. It's a CPRB status report and recommendation. And Carol Mitten will start out with an update on the status of CPRB complaints and appeals. And we have two members of the CPRB board, the chair and a member with us, Ricardo Diaz and Scott Dossett, for questions and comment.
Okay. I'm going to share my screen again. And I hope the slides are up.
Yes.
All right, great. So you've heard a lot of commentary over the, the weeks about what's happening at CPRB. So I thought a little anchoring in, in the facts would be useful. So this is an overview of, should actually be complaint and police complaint and CPRB appeal trends. So there's been, as you can see from this graph, there's been a dramatic increase in police complaints in 2020. So just to put that in a little bit of context, prior, the prior 10 years to, to this year, and I should say this is year-to-date 2020. There is an average of nine complaints per year, and we are already at 10 times that number this year. And the range over the past, or the prior 10 years, has been a low of three complaints in 2014 to a high of 13 complaints in each of 2012, 2015, and 2019. So I think it's important for you all to know, and, and I had included with this item in the packet, and then I, there's a, there's a black and white version in the packet that everybody could look at, a, a sort of condensed and anonymized log of the police complaints. And there's also a condensed and anonymized log of appeals. I think it's important to understand that this increase in complaints is being driven by a single complainant. In the log, it's complainant number three. You can see here that complainant number three has at least year-to-date 86% of the complaints that have been filed. If you were to remove those complaints from the total, the total number of complaints would be 12. And that's within the range of the, the last 10 years. And I do want to just put an asterisk on that, which is, this is only year-to-date. So even with that, you know, it's, it's possible that it would go outside the range. But we're, we're, aside, aside from this, from this one complainant, we're, we're tracking pretty similar to what we've had in the past. So the increase likewise, the increase in the number of appeals is also being driven by a single appellant. So typically, we don't have any appeals in, in a, in a year. So this year, we have 60 appeals on 92 complaints. And you can see from this, complainant number three is also appellant number one in, in the log. They, those are the same individual. And the appeals from other complainants is just a very small number. So you see here that 97% of the appeals are from a single individual. Now, the log of complaints also has little, just little notations. They don't tell you a lot, but they tell you enough that you could track this, which is, we put them into four categories. And I want to say again, this is only year-to-date, so these numbers could change. But these are the total complaints by complainant number three in 2020, year-to-date. And we put them in four categories. There are administrative slash procedural complaints where a letter was not provided timely, or a letter was not provided at all when one was expected, things of that nature. Those are 36% of the complaints. There are other complaints that are, that relate to police officers driving their vehicles and being observed, committing minor traffic infractions. And those are in the category of did not use a turn signal, rolled a stop sign, or were supposedly speeding. That's more than half of the complaints from this individual. There were three complaints related to the April 10th incident, and then another 6% or 7% of the total that relate to actual misconduct of a, of a higher nature, or some other category that didn't, or some other issue that didn't fit into one of the other categories. So if you take the, the administrative and procedural complaints and the car and minor operational complaints, those actually compose 89% of the complaints that this individual has filed. So it appears that the complaints are being used to leverage, to engage the appeal process. And I say that reminding you that in most years, complaints don't convert to appeals very often. We don't have very many complaints, and they rarely get converted to appeals. This shows the conversion rate for complaints to appeals so far in 2020. So for the complainant who is, who is the primary source of complaints and appeals, their conversion rate is above 70%. So they, they, this person appeals almost everything that they, every complaint that, that they submit, whereas others, even this year, are around 15%. And then this other chart just breaks it down in the complaints that have been appealed into those same categories of the misconduct and other, the administrative and procedural, the car and minor operational, and the April 10th incident, just to give you a sense of how the, the, the appeals stack up in terms of what is being appealed, what's the nature of the complaint being appealed. So I have a couple of charts here. This one is the impact on resources of complaints. I have a companion piece that shows the impact of, on resources of appeals. These are, on the complaint side, this is actually pretty much the cost that we've incurred. I mean, we, we do not track the number of hours that we spend. I mean, I, I really wish we had because then I could give you a, a much clearer picture of, of the resources that are, that are being spent on these complaints. But we estimated that typical complaint takes about six hours of staff time. And that's a, a variety of, of staff in the police department, in the HRO office, and, and some admin folks. And then we've assigned, we've assigned a, a cost to that. But what I really want you to focus on, even, and the number's not explicitly listed here, is this is about 500 hours of staff time. So to the extent, I, what I want you to be thinking about, and, and I'll make it a little bit more, be a little bit more direct about it at the end, which is, is this how, given everything that's happening and all of the priorities that you have for staff on the police side and on the HRO side, is this how you want them spending their time? So here on complaints, 500 hours of staff time, and that's basically spent already. That's, that's a sunk cost. For, on the appeal side, we haven't heard any appeals yet. We've tried a couple of times. We haven't been successful in actually getting a hearing scheduled, aside from one that was held in January before I got involved in all of this. But this is the estimated cost, if we were to have, to conduct appeals on all of the appeals that are currently pending. And the amount of staff time here would be about 900 hours, and that's staff time. That does not include the volunteer time of the CPRB, which is not an inconsequential consideration when you think about the fact that there's, you know, there's regular meetings that these folks have to attend, and we've been asking them to do some additional training and so forth. So this would be what we're facing with the appeals that are, that are coming forward. So I wanted to share with you a couple of, of examples of what other communities do. One of the, so I come from Washington DC. I was familiar with the Office of Police Complaints there. And I was kind of surprised when I got involved with the CPRB work and the ordinance because the, there is no definition of misconduct. There is no framing of it. There, every, anything that anybody wants to put on a police complaint form that is about a police officer is fair game. And what, and these are the examples, these are the categories of misconduct that warrant investigation by the Office of Police Complaints in Washington DC. So I'll just run through these quickly. Harassment, unnecessary or excessive force, inappropriate language or conduct, discrimination, retaliation, failure to wear or display required identification or identify oneself by name and badge number when requested to do so by a member of the public. So little higher category, a little more significant before they're going to invest the time to do an investigation. In Chicago, the Chicago Civilian Office of Police Accountability has these categories of complaints: bias-based verbal abuse, coercion, death or serious bodily injury in custody, excessive force, improper search and seizure, firearm discharge, taser discharge that results in death or serious bodily injury, pattern or practices of misconduct, unlawful denial or access to counsel. Again, these are of a more significant nature. So what I wanted to, what I wanted to share with you is how the time of the individuals who are involved in the police complaint process and the CPRB are being spent or will be spent, given the ordinance as it currently exists. And what I, and, and I have not discussed this presentation with Ricardo or Scott Dossett. They saw the, the logs. I mean, they're familiar with the logs anyway. So they, they can, they can speak for themselves. But what, what I would like to get a sense of the council on is, my view is that we need relief from these lower-level complaints that are really not what I believe the CPRB was created to deal with. There, that's not how other communities invest the, the time of their police department and of their, their, the offices that handle those complaints and the boards that do the review or the investigation, or however they're structured. And we can continue as we are, but that means we have less time to do some of the other things that, that people are clamoring for, like the, the use-of-force policy rewrite. People want to include other policies in that. That all takes time. People want to see some reform of the wholesale reform of the CPRB ordinance. That takes time, and that's time of the very same people who are involved in all of this. So I'm asking for some sense of direction from all of you about, about prioritization. And I, and I, and I think that this is, that the way that, that we've been spending our time processing the police complaints that I described to you tonight, the vast majority of them is not a good use of our time. So I don't know, Mayor, if now is the time you'd like Scott or Ricardo to, to say something, but I'm done with the slides.
Okay. Yes, Carol and Scott or Ricardo, if you'd like to weigh in, and then we'll go to council questions and comments.
This is Ricardo.
Hi, Ricardo.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for the time spent on this. I guess, Carol, I knew you were, you were presenting tonight. I didn't know the details, but of course, the, the logs are, are, are for every board member, and especially Scott and I have looked at them and tried to categorize. My, my sense is that we haven't had hearings, but we have mostly a new board in this, in, in that there's two of us old, and then everybody else has, is either new or has not experienced a hearing. So as we do more hearings, we will have more experience. So I'm, I'm talking now as to the quality, not just the quantity of, of complaints. I would, as much as I am quite aware that we have a good police department, I think it's fair that we have and listen to residents in, in, in complaints, in, in appeals at minimum, so that we have a sense of everybody's view about what's going on. So I am in agreement that the numbers presently are not allowing us to even think of including or opening ourselves up to getting more feedback from more residents. So we will be meeting this Wednesday as, as a board, and we're, we'll be discussing what else to do. We have also attempted to categorize and prioritize so that we have before, as the complainant mentioned, so that we would have more interactions. My last thought is this, in both the, our procedures, but also the ordinance talk a lot about, or mention mediation. And I think in this case, it should be a, a recommended option such that a lot of the complaints right now are strung together, derived one from another. derived one from another. And we have procedures that are more sequential rather than back and forths that while sometimes unpleasant, allow for, in my estimation, a better option for resolution. So we haven't explored it or pushed it more, but I think that right now our procedures, out of the three, probably three, maybe four hearings that I've been a part of, each one of them takes two to three hours. And if each one of the complaints right now took that long, we would have no one on the board because it is, it's draining and it's, and it's a lot of volunteer time. So considerations for you all. My last related, more tangentially, is that it would be very nice to have a better communication between the council and the CPRB. And however we can bridge that, instead of just listening to each other's meeting, whether it's a liaison or a presence of each other, so that we would get the flow of the same issues, not just in parallel, but more interwoven. It would be nice because we often hear from the same public and the same topic. It's even for the public better because then they don't have to put it out twice. They know that it's being heard. I don't know if Scott wants to say anything else, but those are my.
Yeah, I've got a statement. I was just letting you finish, Ricardo. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I don't use, I don't use this headset very much. So I have, I have something written. I'm just going to read through it. As most of you know, I'm a current and the sole remaining original member of the CPRB, but tonight I'm speaking from my own perspective and do not represent the board. In my opinion, the reason for the increase in complaints is a perfect storm of, number one, the Aleah Lewis incident. Number two, poor performance by the CPRB in releasing periodic reports and in its routine function. And three, the desire of the citizenry to reimagine the primary structure of the CPRB with an alternative approach to transparency. A lot of stuff we could unpack there. So how does this relate to our topic? This situation has resulted in a large number of complaints related to minor points of UPD officer driving habits, FOIA requests, and what you might call procedural bias or mishandling by UPD staff. All across the country, people are concerned about systematic bias in policing. The Lewis incident caused much concern about the treatment by police and especially coupled with number two, in other words, the lack of CPRB function. An environment where the planned and routine compilation, analysis, and publication of complaints yearly has not happened causes much concern. In addition, citizens did not understand the exemption to CPRB processing related to cases under review by the court system. We can't look at them. They don't know why. It's hard to blame the citizens for feeling the complaint process is a rigged game when the great cry related to this case seems to be met by inaction by the CPRB. The poor performance of CPRB, and especially in terms of its own control of its own complaint process, which was not being observed and had been delegated to the UPD, and the lack of reporting reduces the trust of the citizen in the CPRB's neutral position regarding incident review. The periodic and long-term review and reporting of complaints is the primary way CPRB reviews and distributes complaint information to the public. In the absence of this, all the public can do is suppose what CPRB does with complaints. You have all read the prospectus circulated in the community about a new, more powerful CPRB. I believe that this desire, which merits further discussion, and the failures noted particularly in two above, so again, CPRB failures, have catalyzed this series of complaints, which I think of as an administrative game of chicken. Let me be very clear. I very much appreciate the complainants' far this work, and it is work. The diligence in submitting complaints, tracking their process through a changing system, and holding our feet to the fire with appeals give us the opportunity for improvement in the system. However, these complaints seem mostly unrelated to the ideas in the prospectus and rather seem at least partially designed to place maximum stress on a system which has no provision for administrative review of complaints. In other words, there is no guidance in the ordinance about the triage of complaints, categories of complaints which the board should defer, limit, or perhaps outright reject. Additionally, there are no limiters on the review scope or administration of the appeals process. I swear to you, I have never, I had never seen Carol's PowerPoint, but I could have predicted it. You know, the downside of all of this is that the energy gets just totally sucked out of the system. Recently, we had a chair step down due to time requirements, someone who was working hard and diligently, and I very much thank Ricardo for stepping up into the breach on this. But although I have been scandalized by saying things in CPRB meetings like we have to be concerned about throughput vis a vis, for example, video evidence justifying appeals, it's a fact. A note about the reasonable workload for the board. I'm hopeful that with the city's recent addition to staff, the CPRB can start to get on schedule. We are behind several years of annual reports, struggling to find appeal hearing times, and are hopeful about responding to the community's concern about a new vision for the board. I am not yet convinced that the appropriate resources are available to this board. Significant time needs to be spent on complaint compilation, research, presentation, and publication, as well as ordinance and internal document review. With that, I want to thank the citizens of Urbana for their continuing critique of the CPRB, and very, very much want to thank the city staff and HRO. It's been such Carol, it's been such a pleasure getting to know Carol and working with her. And I know that, you know, she's really pulling strong for the board to be a success. So thank you.
Bill Colbrook.
Carol, with the DC model and the Chicago model, what would that do to the current crop of complaints that we have? Would that, would any of the current complaints fall into any of the categories from either city?
I actually, glad you asked me that because I had a note on that. If we were to have limitations of the type that Chicago and DC have in place, only 11 of the complaints received so far this year would have been investigated and processed instead of 92.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Sharice?
Well, I guess I have a question for Scott. Are you, are you suggesting, because you were talking about the, the what the CPRB really doesn't have. So are you suggesting that maybe what you need is more or deeper definition of certain, certain things that can be investigated?
Well, yeah, yeah, thanks for the question. If you read the ordinance in the, both the complete and appeals section, there are no rate limiters. We take every complaint. Every complaint can generate an appeal, and the system gets wildly out of control. There's just no guidance. This is the paragraph that I wrote. Actually, this is in bold in my Word doc. There is no guidance in the ordinance about the triage of complaints, categories of complaints which the board should defer, limit, or perhaps outright reject. Additionally, there are no limiters on the review scope or administration of the appeal process. So as a board, we are faced with a circumstance where a complaint that was submitted and then an appeal that was filed about an officer not using a left turn signal has the same weight in our system as an appeal by someone who feels as if after being pulled over by a traffic stop, a police officer was rude and uncooperative, or maybe they felt endangered. So the question really, really, you know, this is not, I mean, I call this administrative review, but it's really more about where we put our emphasis. And I think there's already a big question in the community about that because people reject the more simple perspective of the complainant and the cop, and we either mediate or list a report or file a report, and maybe there's an appeal. And the way we kind of looked when this system was built back in 11 and 12, they're now, the community is now looking so deeply to divisive concerns about, you know, deeply integrated police behaviors that the only way they can input to us is in this, this form of complaint that Carol has described. And so I don't know if that was clear, but the, the main thing to me is that our inability to triage means that we don't have time to really do the service that the ordinance was designed for. And although you can argue that this ordinance should be changed, and we ought to have a $2 million budget and move out of City Hall, I don't think that's realistic in terms of trying to make progress right now.
Carol?
I would just, I would just add to what Scott was saying, which is, you know, if, if, if the number of serious complaints and, and, you know, so, you know, we'll put them into the serious and non-serious. And I, and I mentioned that using those criteria from Chicago or DC would have resulted in 11 serious complaints. And, and I think that in the complaints that we've had in prior years have been more of the serious kind, not these, not these less serious kind. There's a very specific effort being made to kind of flood the system right now. That I think there's people who will use the system, and the system needs to be better. And Scott is, Scott is not shy about holding the city accountable for our past failures, and rightly so. I mean, I, I got involved in this very personally because I'm responsible for making it better, and, and people should look to me and hold me accountable for, you know, for, for that. I wasn't here for all of the, the years that it wasn't operating at full strength. But then there's, there's other people who want to, I, I mean, I believe this, and we've heard from folks, that they want to trust the system and, and be able to make other serious complaints. But they don't because they don't trust the system, because they don't know the, they don't, CPRB hasn't done outreach, or we haven't made the system feel as accessible as possible. So my, my point is, what do you want us spending our time on? A paper chase of these low-level complaints just to, just to, just to flood the system and siphon off energy? Or would you like us to be, to be trying to make the system better and more effective for people who have serious complaints? Because I, I don't think there are the same number of serious complaints lurking out there as, as are reflected in the, in the, in the overall, you know, in the numbers. But if there are people out there who don't trust the system, those are the people we want to, want to make it better for that have, you know, serious problems that they want addressed, not, not someone who's, who's trying to, to break the system and then call it broken because he broke it.
I think Mary Alice was next, and then Dennis.
So I guess what I'm hearing, a couple of things here. I'm hearing that the, the system is quite bogged down right now because we have a huge number of complaints, and that large number of complaints is reflective of a variety of different kinds of things, ranging from excessive use of force to not using your turn signal. And so there's no current system within CPRB, which allows us to kind of triage, to use Scott's word, the most important cases are the most urgent cases versus the ones can be in the waiting room, so to speak. So I guess my question to, to Carol and to the city council and Ricardo and Scott is, is the intent for us to have a conversation in terms of that triage system that would be those kind of rules that would be applied to the ordinance, or is the intent to really recraft the ordinance so it reflects all of that?
Well, I'll, I'll speak for myself. And then, you know, as you know, Scott and Ricardo have minds of their own, and we don't always agree on things. I think, I think that the, the civilian police review board or whatever oversight you have was not intended to deal with minor traffic infractions. I don't think it was for that. I think those are an administrative-type complaint that shouldn't be in the system at all. And so, and, and I would say, if you want us to be doing the important work that often is discussed in the council, we need immediate relief. I, I can tell you that this is just the amount of administrative time spent trying to manage through this. And even, you know, even just trying to schedule a hearing, given all the people that have to, all the schedules that have to get juggled and, and all of that, it's, it's a lot of work. So I would like those to be something that is important, something substantive, not did, you know, did Bryant Seraphin file a report or send a letter on time? I mean, I, I just, I have trouble thinking that that's a good use of time. But given the hamster wheel of process that we're on, we don't really have a chance to say, oh, we're going to put those aside. And I would say not put them aside for later. I would say put them aside entirely. That's not what this process should be for. Now Scott and Ricardo may feel differently about that.
But Carol, let me just ask you. So are you asking us to then rewrite the ordinance to reflect that? Or are you saying that we need to come up with some guidelines and rules in terms of how to enforce ordinance?
No, I would say the ordinance needs to be amended in order to accommodate this. And I know that there is a desire to do a wholesale rewrite of the ordinance, but in order to give us the time, to free up the time to do that, we need immediate relief. So I'm asking for some kind of incremental help that then frees us up to focus on the important work that you want us to do.
And you're having a staged, staged change to the ordinance?
Yes. Thank you for saying, asking what you asked so that I could be more clear.
Yeah, I agree with Carol, and I think the model that wasn't the Chicago model might have sounded a little bit more open than the Chicago model to me. But there are so many places in the ordinance where work needs to be done. I would sure, I would sure hate to delay any relief to the H O R for some kind of a grand ordinance rewrite. Now, I know that, I do agree that it seems to me like, you know, the ordinance is everything, and we've got to change it. But it could be pretty brief and, you know, just has to bridge a couple of sections related to the appeal and complaint process. You know, we're probably talking her, her graph and, you know, 25 to 50 words or something like that.
Dennis?
Wait. Oh, I'm sorry, Ricardo, go ahead.
Well, just first reaction to Mary Alice's question, is it a major rewrite or specification? It shouldn't be, it doesn't have to be either or. That is, right now, classifying, I'm going to take every complaint as real and important. Because right now, the way we're set up, they are that. Because if the procedure was followed, then it's a legitimate complaint. Uh, and it ought to be considered as such. But going forward, we need, so, so we do need some set of classification that's both fair to the resident uh, and, and to the city resources. But going forward, there, there are definitions at minimum that need to be written into, into the, a larger uh, uh, rewrite of the ordinance because you, City Council, uh, need to decide what type of CPRB you want. And you don't have to go far. Whether you go in Chicago where there's classifications, what people choose, or in Champaign in which there is one email for all complaints about all city staff and only certain ones go to their uh, uh, complaints about police. That way, there is a way for uh, several of these, once again, legitimate complaints. If we're to follow what the ordinances are, then they, they have a channel. But it's not those people that are specializing. We're seeking to learn enough of the police uh, rulebook that was discussed earlier tonight to be able to say, yes, that rulebook is being applied fairly to the officer as, as far as the use of force and the resident then was or was not treated correctly. Which right now should be the CPRB's first uh, work. But, but we are, you know, very much in, in, uh, doing many other things but that. Thank you. And I know there's other questions.
Um, I don't know, I don't remember who was next. Dennis? Dennis, go ahead.
Um, yeah, so I appreciate this uh, the information that we're getting. It sounds to me like it's going to be very useful to uh, define the kinds of complaints which are singularly important and those which are not as consequential. And maybe besides, some can be added administratively. Maybe some of them can be just informative to the officers in question to be more careful of certainly procedures and other ones maybe require the officer to come and answer to the board more detailed, in a more detailed manner. I don't know. I might have two questions, I guess. Have there been multiple people making a similar request about a certain incident? Is that aspect, is there, is there duplicity or duplication rather? In the um, in the complaint field from multiple sources on one single issue?
I would say, I, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Well, you can answer that.
Okay, um, I, I would say that there may be one other, but the, the primary overlapping incident was the April 10th um, use of force incident. There, there may have been one other. I can't remember for sure, but certainly there was there.
And then. Right. And so would they be handled as um, would they be grouped into uh, the review as a single issue? You wouldn't have to do three or four different summations or reviews because of from, from three or four sources for a single complaint issue. Is that, would that be true?
Well, that's, that's an issue that um, Scott has brought up with the um, if, if um, people are allowed to observe video in particular um, and multiple people because the, of videos in wide circulation could then submit complaints and then and, and that could potentially lead to appeals. The ordinance doesn't speak to it and the CPRB, um, I think they've raised it as a, as a challenge that, that they would have to face if, if there were such a um, such a sequence of events. I mean, right now, the April 10th incident is um, you know, because of the, of the um, criminal case and then the civil litigation that's been threatened, that's all been suspended. So, so we haven't faced it yet.
We haven't faced it yet. And then we haven't really decided yet, I, as I recall, I know it's been discussed, whether we're going to accept complaints based on video observation rather than somehow being personally involved or personally viewing or being present.
Right. That, that, that was a, that was a, a discussion that was held um, a few weeks ago at council. Katrina Kendall came and she, um, she posed the, the request from CPRB and then there was a series of questions that, that came back. I sent those to CPRB and that's a topic for their agenda on Wednesday to, um, to discuss those questions.
Okay. All right. Well, I look forward to um, the evolution and I think there's certainly some things that we can do, we can suggest to um, make the, make the process more efficient and uh, more true to what I think is, was the intent of this ordinance, to deal with serious infractions of um, of civil liberties.
Yeah, and as I recall Dennis, uh, Carol's probably got this right in front of her uh, in terms of the duplicated sort of complaints. The April 10th incident only resulted in like three or four. So it, they're manifestly smaller in number than uh, this other suite of uh, you know, not using a blinker or, or the fact that a letter wasn't returned or something like that.
Right. It, it's like, so somebody then is nitpicking the, the uh, the system. And uh, I would say it's like, almost like harassment of staff and of the CPRB because it's just depending on whether you think these are valid infractions that need to be reviewed as a complaint.
Well, I like to think about it more as truly a concerned citizens' challenge of the system. And if that results in this body deciding to amend the ordinance to provide relief to H O R along the lines of the itemized list about serious infractions, quote unquote, that Carol provided, then that will have been a good thing. So.
Okay, I accept that.
Any other questions? Sharice?
I, I guess like, because I'm looking at this list and so I do have a question. And, and I guess so, um, in California where I lived, um, I lived in LA, I know that there were, you know, people that had, they had uh, what they considered valid issues that would go to court. That um, I think had, had um, held up the, the courts so much that the courts did make a definition regarding what they called frivolous lawsuits. And um, what I, I guess what I want to know is that is, is that uh, a particular type of rubric we might want to use? Uh, because I'm looking at this list. It is just like, you know, car 65, car 61. I don't know what that means.
I'll represent to you, as somebody who, who knows what's in those complaints, that if it says car, marked car, unmarked car, or whatever, it's either um, the, the observer thought the car was speeding, rolled a stop sign, failed to use a turn signal. Those are almost exclusively the car references.
Okay. And this, and the CPRB was, I wasn't, I wasn't um, here when, when that was put in place. Uh, and maybe somebody could tell me what the original um, purpose even for CPRB, just so that I have understanding. It's not like I, I can, I'm, I'm, I can pretty much, you know, infer what it's, what, what it's there for. But if I could get a, a better understanding uh, from somebody.
Uh, Dennis, did you want to respond to that? Otherwise, could have one of the members.
Sure. And um, Scott could do it better than I can, but um, you know, there was a real, uh, a real interest in the community to um, address, uh, probably was, I would say, you know, uh, you know, innate bias of, what they felt was the innate bias of the, the police monitoring and stopping um, black youth and individuals, among others. And uh, um, and the, the CPRB was created after a lot of discussion. I know, I know that Officer Chief um, uh, Patrick uh, went to a workshop in Orlando, Florida and came back convinced that CPRB was actually a good tool for the community, not something that was intended to um, harass or victimize the police department as a, as a unit. Uh, so he was in support of it. But I will say that uh, the advocates at the time were really interested in having subpoena power. That they wanted to bring the police in and uh, basically sort of educate whether there was wrongdoing or not. And I, and the, uh, it was not possible to do that, partly because the, the government um, union contract regulates to some extent um, how police are, are disciplined. And it was, you know, important, that was an important aspect of it that the city had to, to acknowledge that, you know, we just couldn't um, educate every single event that was happening in the police department. But still, uh, police action requires civilian review because if it's, if it's entirely in the police department, then where's the transparency and fairness? So, so the, the CPRB is kind of a compromise and it's a delicate balance. But um, there was a lot of discussion about it and it was adopted and we were one of the first in the state, as I recall, to have it. And as well, it may be regional even. Certainly before Champaign adopted it, which was a couple of years later.
First south of I-80 is what I recall from back in the day.
There you go. You remember. Because you were right there too, at the beginning.
Yeah, I think Dennis gives a pretty good rendering of it, Sharice.
Okay.
Through time, what the board has been able to do has been in flux, not only because of turnover of board, but of staff. And so the work that we've actually been able to do has been, you know, complicated by that. But, you know, I, I think uh, it was an effort uh, in good faith and liberality to find a systematic way to try to improve police and community interactions. Which is why getting out of this environment where these, I think I'll just use the term aggressive complaints are sucking the, you know, the life out of the system, i- i- is a valuable thing to consider. Because in order for us to be systematic and communicative and get reporting back on track and uh, talk about the subtleties that you can see in the data, and, and you can, because I have looked at it. We're going to have to spend time to do that. And it's time that we probably should have been spending and haven't spent. But it's not going to get any better if we're continuing, you know, to kind of have to parry these um, you know, what you might call nuisance complaints. So.
If you can't get off the hamster wheel, basically. Because you gotta be able to, you gotta have, yeah, time and space to, in fact, put in the time and energy and research that it would take in order to of uh, bring forth uh, some kind of uh, amendment or, or rewriting of an ordinance uh, that is meant to uh, to deal with uh, complaints that people may have with the police, correct?
Not as much, Sharice. Um, we, over the last month, month and a half, we've been splitting. We have the regular meetings to deal with issues. And then the hearings are on a separate track, separate calendar. So that we can be advancing on them. And while we haven't been able to hold them because of scheduling mostly and just the way things have lined up, uh, our regular meeting on Wednesday will be uh, uh, one in which we want to attack the issues underlying uh, rather than talk about individual. The hearings are closed anyway and so they, they, they have to be on a separate track. So we are very willing to work on what is it that needs to be done uh, to get a better system.
Okay, so you have regular meetings that, where the complaints are brought forth and then you have a hearing regarding the complaints and then you have an appellate meeting as well?
No, we have regular meeting for business and system. And then we have hearing days for the individuals' complaints to be handled.
Let, let me just clarify. The complaints are processed through the H O R and the police department. And then there's a decision that gets made. And then if the person doesn't like the decision, they can appeal it and that's when it goes into the CPRB process.
Okay.
Okay. And, and it's though, the hearings are on the appeals.
Okay.
Just, just to give you a sense of what a hearing involves, there was, there was a hearing scheduled on seven of these appeals for this past Friday night. That was the only night available to do it. So we were asking people to be here on a Friday night from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. It took hours and hours just to get a, a time identified that was acceptable to the board members, to the staff, to support it, to the complainant. We also had to engage the hearing officer. We're hiring outside, an outside attorney for each and every one of these hearings. Then there was the time spent preparing for this, um, this hearing. There was hours, several hours of, um, well, I don't know, a couple of hours of training um, the CPRB board chair to actually manage Zoom webinar because this involves being in an open meeting, then going into closed session to hear from the complainant, going back out into open session, going back into closed session to hear from the other side. So there's a fair amount of technical, you know, just, just learning to manage the webinar um, within the CPRB board to maintain the confidentiality of the process. And um, it's, it's so, so it was an incredibly complex and um, time-consuming, labor-intensive process. In the end, um, the, number one, it didn't work out apparently for the complainant in his schedule. So that didn't go forward. And then by that time, several of the CPRB board members apparently had conflicts as, as well. So the, the, the resources, the time, the money, the energy consumed with these um, frivolous complaints are demanding and sucking, as Scott has said, sucking the energy out of the ability to actually deal with the serious and significant issues that the public wants us to deal with. And if people are wondering why things are moving slowly, you know, we have COVID, yes, but we also have a system that is being deliberately um, buried. And, and there, there's a fairly surgical way that, that the board, CPRB can actually get out of this. It's just amending the ordinance to the point where you develop a triage system and then follow that. But it's important, I think, for everybody to understand what, what this whole process involves and what, what people have been dealing with recently. Say, any other questions then? Jared?
You're muted, Jared.
Thank you, Mary Alice. So, uh, first question, is there a complaints process outside of CPRB? Or is the only way someone can make a complaint against the police through the CPRB?
Well, this is, this is what gets into the definition of what's a complaint. Right now, if you put it on the complaint form and it's about a sworn officer, it's a complaint. The way I've tried to equate it um, is that, you know, like at Public Works, if somebody wants to complain about a Public Works employee, they can call me. And they could say, so-and-so was driving erratically, so-and-so was rude to me, so-and-so ran over my mailbox. And the, the complaint is dealt with. In terms of an official process, no, this is the only process. But is there a way for someone to lodge a complaint? They can call the deputy chief, they can call the chief.
So prior to the existence of the CPRB, there were no processes for people to make complaints against. there were no processes for people to make complaints against police misconduct?
I wasn't here, I don't know.
I don't recall that there were.
That's interesting. Because, you know, basically what I'm, in that particular question in lies the question of, well, what do we do with these complaints that we're now all calling nuisance complaints about not using, not using a turn signal or not stop, fully stopping a stop sign and things of that nature? You know, if I can get stopped and written a ticket for violating the law, why is a police officer not held to the same standard? That's the question that I want to have about at least those particular small complaints.
Well, I would equate it a little bit different, although, you know, I mean, that's a perfectly valid thing and a valid question. But I would equate it to, how would you feel about a police officer who sat at a particular stop sign and gave everybody who rolled the stop sign a ticket? Is that how, in the scheme of things, is that how you want that police officer prioritizing their time? So the question that I'm putting to you, I'm telling you what the complaints are, how much, how big the volume is, where they're coming from, and the content. And I'm suggesting to you, this is not a good use of our time. If you think it's a good use of our time, then that's the direction the council should give us. And we will continue on this hamster wheel of processing all of these complaints and this high level of appeals. And we will struggle to get hearings scheduled, and the backlog will just build and build and build. But I would say in the time of, you know, of, that we are in now, where people are, you know, fearful of the police and use of force and all of that, I don't find that to be in the same league at all. And I don't think that's a good use of time, and that's why I'm bringing it to you. If you would like to defend it, please do.
I get what you're saying. I'm just, I'm merely proposing in that particular sense of, you know, brushing off the inconsequential, if that's what we're calling it, the nuisance complaint, that there needs to be, in any action of doing so, some other process created for accountability in that measure. If we're trying to shift those responsibilities to serious complaints only, then minor complaints need their another process. Do you get what I'm getting at? That's what I'm...
It should be the same process for any other, any other city employee, which is you call the department head or you call the deputy, and you say, I saw so-and-so do, you know, roll a stop sign or whatever, and I don't think that's right. And having a process...
So we need to put, you know, an 800 number on the back of the police cars that say, if you don't like...
Oh, I'm not driving.
Call 1-800, and make a complaint?
I'm fascinated by the fact that there's only one person in the city of Urbana who seems to care about this.
Well, here's the thing about why that is, is because, let's go back, now let's go back to what the purpose of the board is, right? What's the purpose of the board? Can anyone answer that question? What's the purpose of the board?
It's clearly stated in Section 1920 of the ordinance that formed the board.
Right, and what is the purpose?
Mary Alice, did you want to comment?
I did, because I highlighted these two things. So Scott, thank you. So in Section 1920, there's two things in here that I think are worth discussion. Section, or letter B says, "Provide oversight of internal police investigations through review of such investigations." So that's obviously a police incident, right? The second one, which is C, is "Provide an independent process for review of citizen complaints." And that's the piece in that definition that I think is quite nebulous, that specific one there. But all the rest of it has to do with the monitoring system and everything. But those two are the heart of what that ordinance was geared towards.
Sure, and I've read it, I know what it says. But what ultimately can the CPRB do? You know, the ultimate question, the ultimate thing, is that it's a review board. I would use the word oversight. And oversight implies that you have some sort of authority to factor in, you know, when there is misconduct, that there is a consequence to that misconduct. And in this ordinance, I don't, I am failing to find anywhere where there are real, actual consequences that can come from a decision from the CPRB. So, you know, and I'm not trying to attack people on the CPRB, so please don't see that as what I'm saying. You know, the flaws are inherent in the ordinance itself, not in the members or their intentions. You know, but the history of it, you know, since I, we basically didn't discuss it for almost the entire four years, you know, rolling up three and a half, I guess, of time that I've been on council, we almost never discussed this civilian police review board. So I can't think of a time that it's ever happened. But is there, has the CPRB ever found or ended up in the finding of wrongdoing by an action of a police officer of the city?
No, we haven't. Now, that doesn't mean that the complaint process wasn't fruitful for the complainant. One of the reasons that the system is not purely based on appeals, and I was going to try not to disagree with Carol about this, but I guess I'll just leap into that, is because in the process of the rendering of the chief about an investigation, we are notified by letter of any kind of administrative review or retraining. I can't think of the other words that might have in the past been used in complaints. And so one of the strongest tools that the board has, which it hasn't exercised, is this ability to take all complaints, categorize, present, and try to tease data out of them. I'm not talking about appeals. I'm talking about all complaints that come to the board. And so in the past, you could see a geographic pattern, or the one that was most important to most of us back in the day was, is it always Officer 23? Is it always Officer 23? Now, that doesn't mean that we're going to take direct action on the, you know, I mean, you guys have got a progressive discipline system, you've got FOP contract, but our job at that point in time is to notify the mayor of a situation that we see, and then it's her job to deal with. So that's the way the system has been used. Now, since we haven't done the annual organization publication and kind of research on those complaints, that large umbrella where we see patterns and try to respond to the community as related to those, those opportunities have been missed. And I think we need to stop missing those opportunities.
So, I mean, is there, if you were, even though it hasn't happened, you know, Scott, you know, the ultimate end result of a successful, we'll call it, complaints to the CPRB, even if it wasn't appealed and the CPRB agreed that, whatever the complaint was, somebody acted in a way that was, you know, not befitting of our policies and all of that, then basically the ultimate end of it is you would, we would send notice to the chief of police and to the mayor that the CPRB thinks that?
That's all we can do, yes.
So, Carol, when you asked the question, I just can't believe that only one person is submitting so many complaints. It's because nobody thinks that the CPRB is going to result in there being any sort of discipline to officers who misbehave.
Don't misunderstand me. My point was not about complaints overall. My point was about minor traffic infractions by police officers. Why or not, if the citizens of the city of Urbana feel that that is police misconduct, then why are we only hearing from one person who will send these things in day after day after day after day? I would, I submit to you that that, no one expects that to be the purpose of this process.
I, sure, and you may be right about that. But also, you know, we're dealing with a culture in our country that for the longest time has put police above the law and said that police, and, you know, it's evident in our state laws, it's evident in the agreements that we have in our union contracts with the police. We're literally, the only people who are allowed to police the police are the police. We can't do anything about it. And I've gone over this over and over again. So, you know, when the average citizen goes out on the streets, where people don't naturally think, oh, well, I need to watch the conduct of police officers, that's changing these days. But because nobody thinks that they have the power to do anything about it, so people just let it happen. And, you know, it's not a lack of, that people don't see it and don't care, it's that people feel disempowered to do anything about it.
Well, in the scheme of things, let's say that that's true across the board, across the board, from the minor to the major. And we only have so much bandwidth, we only have so many staff hours to deal with that, those complaints. Do you want us spending our staff hours on the full range, or would you like us to focus on the more significant? That's what is really at issue here.
Well, that's, it's, to me, it's almost an irrelevant discussion. Because focusing on the minor versus focusing on the serious, when either of them resulted in outcome that means nothing, maybe a tersely worded email to the mayor and the chief of police that somebody has done something inappropriate, then what's the point? Why prioritize serious things when there's not going to be a serious result as of the action?
Well, there is an impact, though. There's a serious impact, and that is the amount of time and money that you are spending on cars rolling through a stop sign when they may very well be on their way to a police call. I don't know what each incident involved. But the point is, there is an impact to what is happening today within the CPRB, and it's unsustainable. So that's where this council needs to give some direction and...
I will see the point that people are going to want to deal with that. Everybody has clearly made that clear. How we deal with it, I presume is going to have to come as an amendment to council to create some sort of language for the ordinance, because I think that what one person thinks may be a small issue might not be a small issue to somebody else. So the very least, we need to have a discussion about those things. I know other people want to say something, so I'll be quiet.
Dennis, go ahead.
So if there was a serious issue, there's a couple of consequences that could happen. I mean, of course, this would have to be pretty much a serious and a pretty apparent issue that would have to be adjudicated. But certainly, initially, an officer could be put on administrative leave until a decision has been made. And, you know, I felt that perhaps that would have been a very wise direction, you know, concerning the April 10th event. Secondly, if that proved to be that there was truly something that had been egregiously experienced, you know, an officer can be let go. You know, you could terminate an officer's employment with the city. The American do that. The American do both of those things. You know, but you're not going to probably go that route, you know, for an officer who rolls three times through a stop sign. But there are consequences if it's serious, I think. There can be.
And there are. I think Mary Alice and then Sharice.
All right, I'll make a couple of quick things. One, I think that what Jared is talking about is just a complete overhaul of the ordinance. Because from what I hear from Jared is that the ordinance is ineffective and it has no teeth, right? In order to do a complete overhaul of the ordinance, I feel like we need to free up the CPRB and staff time so that they have the opportunity to have these conversations and that they can work with us to have the long conversations that we're going to need in order to fix the CPRB or to rewrite or to completely reinvent, whatever phrase you want to use. So to that end, I think that in timing, we need to figure out what, at the very moment, we want CPRB to be doing. Is that, you know, thinking hard about what this whole ordinance should be? Is it educating the public in terms of how people can do complaints? And, you know, there's a lot of different things there. But I think really, the immediacy right now is we need to tell CPRB, this is what we want you to focus on. So to that end, I would like to propose, I know we only have four minutes until the end of the meeting, we'll probably have to extend it. But I would like to propose that the committee at the whole, that we have a conversation and all of us think about, what are those key things that we want CPRB to be? What does that triage look like? So that we can free up the time for them to do all the other stuff that we want them to do. So with that, can I make a motion to extend...
Yes, please.
Until 10:45?
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Sharice, to extend to 10:45. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Okay, Phyllis?
Here I am.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Okay, we'll extend to 10:45. Did you want to continue, Mary Alice?
No, I tried to get my words in really quickly, but I know Sharice had some things that she wanted...
Great. Sharice?
As CPRB is set up right now, I guess my question is either just Scott or Ricardo, if he's still here, but definitely Scott, he's still here. As the CPRB is set up right now, is, are, do they have the capability or the authority to, let's say, like you were saying something about seeing a pattern of behavior with particular officers? Do you have the authority to call out this particular officer and suggest either suspension, termination, or anything like that to go to the office of the mayor or to the city council? Do you have the power to do that?
I think we have the power to write an advisory letter based on our analysis of our data, sure.
Okay. And when the CPRB was established, have you ever had to use that particular power?
Well, this gets in, the devil's in a little bit in the details there. Because of the board's inactions, we're actually missing about six years of annual reports that would, that summaries of such would be based on. Another, you know, so we're just, you know, that far behind. So we haven't rendered anything like that.
But I think it's fair to say that without a report, we still have a relatively number, a small number of cases that have come before us or could have come before us. And the ones that have come, have had, at least from the vote of the board, have not been against the chief's decision. I have been in, one in which I abstained, and one in which I voted against the decision to support the chief. That's been as close as I recall having a disagreement with what the chief determined after their investigation. So we haven't been close, but the numbers haven't been there to say we should have had more. That is, my reading is that up to now, there has not been an instance in which something was so egregious that it would call for that and that we were impeded. and that we were impeded. That is, things could have happened within the department that we didn't know about and where inaction was taken and it just didn't make it to us. So I have not felt impeded, but it's true. We haven't had, we have not reported back for various reasons. But ultimately, here we are and wanting to do better. I just want to comment on Jared's, because he said it several times. We are not all arguing that the complaints are inconsequential. For me, it is more to what he did say, that that is, people have different degrees as to what they expect from their police department. And therefore, they should have a right to complain about what they see as improper, whether it is actionable or not. I think we have enough options to, when something is grave, for us to at least bring it forth. And I can, I don't have, and I don't see any hesitancy on the Board to have, to bring it up as publicly as possible if it needed to be done. But it is on all the degrees below that that we need to handle. And yes, it is back to council. It is back to you guys to define it enough to either enable us to act, to categorize and/or to channel to somebody else to handle some of these cases so that we can concentrate on the intention of the original ordinance, which was basically misconduct appeals or under complaints and/or for what Scott mentioned, which is, what are the patterns? Where are we really on those patterns? If we had access to data or we could generate the data, we would look for those patterns. The public, I think, would be more satisfied. Because we do, if we don't have the information in front of us, we can't claim transparency. And we can't claim, we cannot claim that it's either well, that all is well, or that it is not going well. And I reject, therefore, the conclusion from any party that tells me that things are so bad or that things are so well. Neither side has standing to make the claim. Thanks.
Also, and I just want one more question.
Okay, then go to Bill Colbrook.
Okay, in reading some of this, I know that it said, you know, there'd be so many days, there are all these days that are, you know, kind of set in stone about how many days it would be that a person should hold a meeting or how many days they'll, you know, before they get a receipt of some kind of information or notice of the findings and so on and so forth. And the thing is, is that maybe if we had a regular working system where people, you know, folks are capable of going into the building and getting that information or the information goes out in the mail or whatever, there may be some things that we need to amend regarding the latest tech. There may be, maybe, there may be some instances or circumstances that need to be mentioned in the event of this kind of circumstance, so on and so forth, or a public emergency or something, just to reflect the times that we are in, not just now, but could be possibly in in the future. So that there are some exceptions to rules that are normally put in place. That would normally work, but won't work under other circumstances.
Okay.
This is just an idea.
Okay. Bill Colbrook?
I just want to make a couple of comments. You know, obviously, we're talking about, you know, what level of complaint would go to the CPRB? What level of complaint would be so serious to garner the attention of the CPRB? I don't think that there is any intent by anybody that if a complaint was lodged for something that was minor, speeding, rolling through a stop sign, turn signal use, that that's just going to go, you know, fall by the wayside and nobody cares. I think that's as farthest from the truth as possible. Prior to the CPRB, I can guarantee you that Urbana Police Department had a complaint process. I don't know exactly what that process was because I wasn't around to know that. But I can almost guarantee you that for years and years and years, Urbana Police Department has had a complaint process. The city implemented a CPRB system in order to have oversight transparency. If we, as a council, would want to institute some rules, a filter system of, like Carol has mentioned, whether it was the DC model or the Chicago model or the Urbana model that we come up independently, obviously, those more serious complaints are going to be sent on to the CPRB. But the other complaints will not be disregarded. I think they would go to a different process. It would go to the Chief, it'd go to the Assistant Chief, it'd go to the Sergeants, it would go to whoever to handle those. I've taken citizens' complaints in two different departments. They're taken seriously. People that have command positions in police departments, they want to give good service to the citizens. They want their police officers to represent the department and the city in a professional and safe manner. You know, if a police officer is speeding to a call, even when they have a right to speed to a call, sometimes maybe they're going way, way too fast. And that, you know, was, you know, a speed that was perhaps over and above of what they should have done. But it gives an opportunity, you know, for, you know, learning, for retraining. There's lots of opportunities, you know. Somebody doesn't need to be fired for every single minor infraction. But if there is repeated complaints about an officer, you know, that is failing to comply with traffic laws, like has been stated, because police officers are under the same rules as other people when they're not going to emergency calls, then there's progressive discipline, you know. Whether it's oral reprimand, written reprimand, you know, day off suspension, three days off, five days off, 20 days off. You use the progressive discipline process to elicit the types of behaviors and performance that you want from your police officers. Just my comment.
Jared?
And though I get that, and I know that, you know, most professional institutions have progressive discipline policies. I mean, I have one that I administer as the manager of my job to my employees. I fire people for doing one wrong thing. And I'm not trying to insinuate that anybody should be fired for not following the letter of the law to the very T because we all don't stop at stop signs. It's a thing, and if anybody has never been in Champaign-Urbana and not noticed that, then you're not paying attention. Used to be red lights, and I feel like that's actually gotten better. But about five years ago, I think that people just regarded red lights as an extended yellow. And I felt like I always had to stop at green lights and make sure there wasn't anybody blowing through an intersection before I actually went through there. Because I can't tell you how many times. I digress. But here's the problem with that, is that we don't have transparent system of accountability to show that progressive discipline. If I wanted to go right now to look at, you know, that, how that policy is being implemented within the police department, guarantee you, I can't find out how it is. There's no way that information is publicly available right now. It's kept completely internal. So what we, as regular citizens, are left with is just wondering, well, I guess we just hope that they're doing the right thing, even though we have no way of knowing it. And that's the inherent problem, both in transparency and accountability and discipline in police departments everywhere across this country, is that it's all kept behind closed doors. They are public employees, who are given weapons that can kill people, that go out on the street every day. And I understand what, you know, that risk and how dangerous that job can be. And I'm not trying to say that police couldn't, in some forms, serve a great purpose in our society. But you have to look back at the history of where police departments come from, how these laws were crafted to protect them, and where we are today. And the reason, you know, this is such an issue and why the CPRB has no teeth and why people don't rely on those internal policies is because we can't, people don't, we just don't, we don't see it in action. I guarantee you, if people could see that Officer so-and-so had a history of problems and got fired and a police union didn't get him rehired at that same department or rehired somewhere else, and you could see those things happen and people knew that bad officers were being kept out of the system, people would feel very differently about it. But because that does not, that is not the world we live in today, people do not trust the police. And they don't trust us because we're not doing what people have been asking for. I mean, this is not a new thing. People have been asking for these things since police have existed. I don't know the history of people asking for reforms, but I'm sure it goes back to the time that police existed. So Carol, when, you know, you're asking us, what do you want us to spend our money on? I'm throwing myself back into April when all of this stuff first came up. And I've been saying this stuff since then, that people are telling us that they want us to spend our money on different vehicles to answer calls for service. Do I want you to spend money dealing with a complainant who's making complaints about police officers at stop signs? No. Do I want us to spend time rewriting an ordinance for a board that provides no real discipline for police oversight? No. I don't want to spend city time on either of these things because none of them are getting us to where we want to be. None of them show leadership from our city. We're supposed to be the progressive city. We're supposed to be the people who are thinking for it. And I don't mean that in a political ideological way. I just mean that in a, we're supposed to be thinking for it. And some things we do great on that on. In this avenue, we're doing horrible on. And it's, it's just, I don't know, I just don't know how else to like make it clear that these things need, that we're focusing on the wrong things. And I think that what this complainant is doing is trying to make it so bad that we have no choice but to talk about how broken a system is in order to try and fix it. Because it is in such bad shape that it, like, the problems are so big. I'm not going to continue on because we're going to have to come to some sort of conclusion about what to do about it because it is an issue. And I just hope that whatever the changes are will come before council and we can talk about them and make a reasonable, have a reasonable discussion about what, you know, we want to do temporarily until we can continue on forward. But just be clear that, you know, asking us what we want to spend money on and asking what the people who we represent in our wards want to spend money on, they've been telling us, and we're not doing it. Thank you.
In order to do it, people need the time to do it. And between the flood of complaints and appeals at CPRB and the flood of FOIA's, the voluminous requests that require hundreds of hours of staff time to respond to as well, there's a limited amount of time. So people want to make the changes, people want to respond to the public. But we are also constrained by what we have to do to follow our ordinances and the laws. So there are some choices there. But anyway, we have one minute before we need to adjourn. I am getting the sense that we need to bring this back to a Committee of the Whole meeting and the focus would be on, I think, the immediate solution is to focus on a filter, the triage, that would allow, temporarily allow, the board, CPRB board, to focus on other, more important issues. Is that the direction you want to go?
I think it is.
Yeah, do you want to motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'll move to bring a discussion to the Committee of the Whole to limit the topics or, I don't know, limit the topics of complaints that are subject to appeal for discussion.
I'll second.
Should that be just appeal or should that be topics that would go to the CPRB to begin with? Because there's two processes.
A rubric of sorts.
Okay, instead of for appeal, for consideration by CPRB?
That's better.
Complaints considered by CPRB. Okay. Did the clerk get that? We'll get it from the tape. And it was seconded by Mary Alice? Okay. We have a five-minute extension to finish this out.
Motion to extend for five minutes.
Okay, moved by Jared, seconded by Bill Colbrook. We have a quick roll call.
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Okay. So we have a motion by Bill Brown, seconded by Mary Alice. Further discussion of this motion. Bill Colbrook?
I just want to echo the comments of you, Mayor, that, I mean, I understand the frustration, you know, that a lot of people have. I think the whole idea is to give the tools to the process, to the CPRB, to focus on the things that they should be focusing on. Not to ignore everything that comes in, you know, to the orbit, but the things that are significant that should be looked at by the CPRB, allow them to have the time to look at those. So we get the transparency, we get the accountability that we want.
Further comments? Mary Alice?
I just have a quick comment to, based on what Jared was talking about. And I know that the police department, specifically Joel Saunders, has been working on the one-door policy. It's been in the works for years. And the hope is, is that something will be live in the beginning of the next, not the next semester, sorry, the next calendar year. And these are the types of projects that I know that City Council wants to see move forward. And so what I am hearing from staff and from different boards is in order for us to have the time and the bandwidth of everybody to be able to work on those things, those bigger picture things that we really want to see in there, we need to free up some of the staff time so that we can do it. So the way I see this is that we're trying to reshift our focus on the larger, the bigger things, Jared, that you're interested in. And I think all the City Council is interested in seeing to fruition.
And just to be clear, work is continuing on one door behind the scenes. And we can, we'll have an update fairly soon. But it's not like it hasn't been going on. Staff and outside partners are continuing to work on that. Okay, are we ready to vote on this motion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Okay, just, all right. Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colbrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
I'll give it the old Dennis Roberts. Yeah, sure, why not?
Okay, that motion passes.
That works.
Well, with no further business before the council, then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.